Quorum, I'd like to start the meeting at 7:01. All right, so I would like to do a roll call. Councilmember Chesek?
Here.
Councilmember Tarlo?
Here.
Councilmember Stofus?
Here.
And as Mayor here, so we have a full quorum. The meeting has started at 7:01. And since we have a full quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. For item number two is review of the agenda. Mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Vice Mayor Tarlo, can you please give a rundown of the agenda, please?
Review of agenda, presentation on audit, presentation on 3200 block of Rhode Island Avenue, presentation, Otis Street building artwork proposal, presentation on city composting proposal, opera discussion, an update, Pats Hall update, next steps for the Police Advisory Board, view of ordinance about assessments and taxation fees, revision, budget amendment, and presentation of minutes, and then adjournment.
All right, thank you so much, Council. I need to know, do you need to make any edits to the agenda? Or are we moving forward with approving the agenda as presented? So I'm gonna go by one, Luke.
Sorry, yes, I'm good with it.
Jared?
Good with the agenda, thank you.
Jimmy?
Fine.
All right, since we're in agreement, we are gonna be moving forward with the agenda. Item number three is presentation of the FY 2020 audit. I'm gonna open the floor to Mr. Kamali. We do have our auditors here today, so that way they could present to the community the findings and the work that we be doing to advance on those findings. Okay, so Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours, and introduce our auditors, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. I do have the auditors over here. I believe I have Fulla. I see Fulla, if I'm not mistaken, and Dan should be here. Are you there, Fulla?
I am here.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's Dan. Can you guys hear me okay?
We could hear you, Dan.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so I do appreciate your time, and I will turn it over to Dan and Fulla to give Mayor and Council more information on audit FY 20, which was finalized two weeks ago.
Yep, all right, great. So, good evening, everyone. Once again, I'm Dan Kenny, audit partner with Cone Resnick, with our senior manager, Ms. Fulla Mastrowasilis, here to present the June 30th, 2020 audit for the City of Mount Rainier. This evening, we're just gonna go through the independent auditor's report, which Fulla is going to put that on the screen. Fulla, just tell me when it's up, and I can tell you what page numbers we're gonna go through. And then we'll go through the internal control letter, the findings, and then Fulla will talk about those charges with governance. So Fulla, if we could start with the independent auditor's report, and let me know when that's up.
She has it up right now.
Okay, great. Okay, so of course it indicates that we've audited the entity for the year ended, and as of June 30th, 2020, it discusses management's responsibilities for the financial statements, and our responsibility, and our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements. The audit was done in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and also government auditing standards, and we believe the audit evidence we've obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our opinion. And in our opinion, the financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2020 are fairly presented for the City of Mount Rainier. And if you go to the second page, this discusses the RSI information, and then the other reporting required by government auditing standards. As mentioned, that's how your audit is conducted. Therefore, we have to issue this report on internal control. So Fulla, why don't you go ahead and go to the internal control report? Let me know when you're there, and then I can discuss that.
I'm there.
Okay, so on the internal control report, there's two areas we focused on. Internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. And in the internal control over financial reporting, there have been four items that have been identified, and they're noted as 2020-01, 02, 03, and 04 that are considered material weaknesses, which we'll go over in a second. And then under compliance and other matters, the results of our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance there. That's the last sentence on that page. And so if you go to the actual findings, the schedule of findings and question costs, there are four findings. All of these findings are repeat findings from the prior year's audit. And the first one has to do with timely and accurate financial reporting. The second one discusses record keeping. The third one is segregation and delineation of duties. And the fourth one is under journal entries. And you can see that management does have a response in each of those. Basically, they're repeat findings because everything has been late. So I don't think the team on hand has had time to really go through those particular items on that particular year. But, you know, I'll let you guys look at your own view of responsible officials on each of those comments. So if anyone has any questions on any of the particulars of the comment, we can go through those. But once again, this is a June 30, 2020 report, and they are repeat findings. So I'm not gonna get into the details on those, unless you guys wanna go through those specifically. So now, just go ahead and turn it over.
So then, yeah, so we do have, I wanna make sure we point out that we do have a new city manager and a new financial team. I think that's what some of the findings shows that we've had a bit of turnaround very constantly in the department. And so I appreciate that. So I think Fulla was gonna cover one more part. Go ahead.
Yep, yep, correct. Okay, go ahead, Fulla.
Okay. You should be looking at the communication with governance, and this letter is going to go through some required communication that we are required to communicate to Mayor and Council under professional standards. In the first section of this letter, it talks about our responsibility in relation to the financial statement audit. It goes into certain details of what was communicated in the engagement letter and what our professional standards are and how we plan and perform our audit. It also talks to how we determine and use our understanding of internal control with relation to the audit. It does say that we consider the internal control of the city solely for the purpose of determining our audit procedures and not to provide any assurance concerning such internal control. We are also responsible for communicating any significant matters related to the audit that are in our professional judgment relevant to your responsibilities in overseeing the financial reporting process. However, we're not required to design procedures for the purpose of identifying other matters to be communicated to you. As Dan mentioned earlier, we did have some significant control deficiencies over financial reporting and material weaknesses that we communicated to you in the letter dated January 28, 2022. Under plan, scope, and timing of the audit, we can wanna communicate to you that we conducted our audit consistent with the plan, scope, and timing we previously communicated to you. Compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence. The engagement team was, our engagement team was independent with relevance to any ethical requirements. Under qualitative aspects of the entity's significant accounting policies, this section goes into detail of certain significant accounting policies. It does lead you down to note one in the financial statement that goes through the majority of those significant accounting policies. In addition, it talks to significant accounting estimates, and it does go through some of the more sensitive accounting estimates, and they include the allowance for doubtful accounts, which is based on management's analysis that receivables one year past due are fully reserved, and others are evaluated at the end of the fiscal year based on customer financial condition, credit history, and current economic conditions. Management's estimate of depreciation expense, which is based on the estimated useful life of the related assets. Management's estimate of accumulated vacation leave is based on payroll reports. And lastly, the management's estimate of the net pension liability is based on the city's proportionate share of the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System net pension liability and the pension expense. Under financial statement disclosures, it does speak to certain financial statement disclosures that involve significant judgment and are particularly sensitive because of the significance of the financial statement users. And we did identify note nine, which is related to the net pension liability. Significant difficulties encountered during the audit, although we ultimately received full cooperation from management, and we believe that we were given direct and unrestricted access to the city's officials and city management. We did experience some delays due to the lack of availability of expected information and delays in the readiness of the trial balance. And that did lead to the material weaknesses that we identified in an earlier letter. Uncorrected and corrected misstatements. This section goes through any identified audit entries that we provided to management that were either passed on or corrected. The schedule of past adjustments was previously provided to management, and any audit entries that we posted during our audit were also communicated to management, and all have been appropriately posted to the accounting system. In addition, professional standards require us to communicate all material and corrected misstatements that were brought to our attention. But again, we did provide all those, and we believe that all those have been communicated. We did not identify any disagreements with management. There were representations requested from management on February 7, 2022, and that was provided to us in a written letter. There were no other consultations with any other accountants. And under significant matters, findings, or other issues, there were no other audit findings or issues that we didn't previously discuss. And with regard to the limited procedures applied to the required supplementary information, or RSI, our procedures consisted of inquiries of management regarding the methods of preparing the information and comparing the information for consistency with management's responses. We did not audit the RSI and do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on the RSI. Our responsibility also includes communication to you any information we believe is a material misstatement of fact. Nothing came to our attention that caused us to believe that such information exists. And that is the completion of this letter. I will open it up for any additional questions anybody has.
Thank you, Fulla. I also wanna point out to the community that this report is gonna go on our website along with the other ones, so it's accessible for you to be able to review it as a resident. So if you were trying to rush to take notes, the document will be up on our website. So I am gonna open the floor to Council right now. Jimmy, go ahead, I see your hands raised.
So I guess the question is, we're dealing with a period from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. So some of the, some of the things has to do with that period, and then there are other things, other comments that have to do with the more recent period where you're trying to get information from our current team? Is it a combination of comments going back then and then some comments that are more current?
The comments that we went over today, we tried to specifically geared to the audit that we are auditing on, the period that we're auditing on. So although some of the, that's why they're kind of isolated in a sense that, you know, we talk about trial balances being delayed due to turnover, and that is due to there are so many different aspects or different personnel that have switched hands trying to obtain the information. So it may seem that we're commenting on the current, but we're actually auditing a previous year, and all the comments really relate to how we were provided the information for that relevant year.
Did turnover has to do with that year or the current? That's what I'm kinda confused.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a twofold, just because we're dealing with the current staff that are there now because there was nobody there. I don't believe there was anybody there currently that was there in 2020 that was able to assist us. But the current employees are actually helping us with the 2020 audit, so.
And just as a city manager, will we have a, able to have a hard copy of the audit in our, that we can review at some point?
Jimmy, we're waiting for auditor to send us, and if there is any issue, we can print a copy and, you know, bind it and give it to you. As I mentioned in my email last week, and we can do it, we can do it at the City Hall. But I thought that the auditor, Fulla and Dan, gonna send us five, six copies for the Mayor and Council, at least.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can go ahead and get copies prepared.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Luke and then Jared?
Thank you all. So just to, you know, a lot of that's probably foreign language to members of the public who are here. Is there, I guess it's a two-part question. One, is there any significant concern from the FY 20 that you might be able to state in sort of plain English? And then, two, do you feel that current management is working to fix any issue that you've spotted? Thank you.
Yeah, so the plain English comment, we do get that a lot just because there are certain words and phrases that we have to state in accordance with, you know, generally accepted accounting principles, and of course, generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. So unfortunately, we can't really deviate from that. However, you know, it is our belief that management, they've been very cooperative, as Ms. Mastrowasilis mentioned. You know, they weren't the ones there at the time, but they've been very cooperative in getting us the information and doing everything that they can to get everything ready. I believe, you know, upcoming, you know, for the next audit and thereafter, I believe they feel, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but I think they feel like they're gonna be in better shape in terms of being able to get the information to us at a quicker pace than in previous years.
I appreciate that, and thank you, Mr. Kamali and staff, for coming in, board, and getting us all straight. I think that, you know, Selena and I were here, and we tried, we've been digging out of this hole, being behind on audits for a while, and being able to get up to speed here with current management, I think will be just a wonderful achievement. So, thank you, Mr. Kamali.
Thank you, Luke. Jared?
Thank you. And I just wanna thank you for taking the time to come in and make this presentation. And, you know, I only been on since May, so, you know, this is kind of the first time I'm diving in to this. I know, as you mentioned, that historically, we had a lot of turnover. We're playing catch-up. I know this has been an outstanding thing for a while. I'm glad to see that we're, you know, getting up to speed and that we're, that the, that the, you know, some of the outstanding questions that have been, that are getting addressed and that we, you know, I think with, as the Mayor mentioned, and as you've said as well, like, you know, we have a staff, city manager in place. We have permanent finance staff in place, and, you know, are building the processes and other pieces together. So I, you know, you did note that, you know, with the personnel changes, city managers prioritize timely and accurate financial reporting. City's made significant progress and continues to do so. So directionally, I feel really good about, you know, the way we're going and your role in kind of reporting on us, and then also, you know, ensuring that our subsequent audits continue to kind of streamline and improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. So, yeah, we've come a long, long way from, I remember when we first hired our current auditors. Dan and Fulla have been working with us for the last few years, to the point that it is standard practice for us and them for them to come in and like present their reports, which allow for the, you know, community to feel like they're which allow for the, you know, community to feel like there's a transparency where they could also ask questions directly to them. At the same time, now that we have FY20 completed, FY21, they're already working on it. I have talked to Mr. Kamali and their team. And they have put internal procedures that will facilitate the accessibility to more, to more accessibility to the information that the auditors need. FY21 was due in October, so we only have a few months behind deadline. So I would say for being three years behind, three and a half years or so, to like a few months behind is definitely a great effort. You think it's like, to consider, it's like Mr. Kamali hasn't even been a full year city manager. So he was able to gather all that information and present it, move forward. For a while, it was still, as changes were coming in. So Mr. Kamali, thank you and the whole finance team and the city team that have collaborated in making sure to pull this information. I know that you have been working with the various departments to try to gather all the data and make sure that new procedures are being put into place. So that's very appreciated. So at least that's my say on it. I think overall it's more procedure than anything. Community members, if you'd like to speak, the floor is open. Just tap your name in the chat and I could call upon you. And Mr. Kamali, do you need anything else you would like to add?
No, I appreciate the mayor and council. As you know, that we haven't started FY21. We're working very closely with Dan and hopefully we're going to get FY20 done very soon. And then my goal is to meet the deadline for FY22, which is October 31st of next year. And we're at the good position, we're trying to put a new team together so, and have internal control, you know, proper oversight and make sure that we have day-to-day, you know, transaction that is recorded, make sure the bank accounts are reconciled each month. You know, six months ago, when I got here, we were way behind. But today I am very confident and I'm planning to put a good team together and work with the auditors and get, get on the right track. So next year, hopefully, we're going to be on the right track.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Any member of the community that wishes to speak, please let me know. Anything on Facebook? So hearing none, I saw, I don't see any other follow-up on your behalf. So I will, I will say, thank you, Dan and Fila, for your work. This is, I believe, your fourth year, beginning of the fifth year with us. And we definitely have seen the turnaround on efficiency and making sure that it's a transparent process to move us forward with. And we definitely appreciate all the extra work on, you know, along with our team to make this happen.
Yep, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, both of you.
You too.
All right, bye-bye.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Fola.
All right, perfect. Moving on to item number four. I know you could tell like a joyful smile. Luke and I have been waiting for this day for quite a few years. It's been a lot of work, but we're happy we're here. So moving on to item number four, presentation on 3200 Rhode Island Avenue Mixed Use Development Project. Mayor and constable will have a presentation for Mr. Fadi Gunner and his architect from IFG Group on the design drawings for 3200 Rhode Island Avenue Mixed Use Development Project. I do, I did some Mr. Fati here. So Mr. Fati and your, and your architect. Do you need us to share screen with you so that way you could have access to the designs?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay, which of you guys need the screen shared so that way Melissa could see you?
My architect, Bill, having access.
I'm Bill Maiden. I'm the architect.
Hello, I know, I saw Maiden, I was like, I know Bill's here, but I couldn't identify you. Sorry, 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 Bill. So Melissa, can you please allow Mr. Maiden access to? And definitely thank you to the various community members that are here from the 37th Street and surrounding as well as Perry Street, who are eager to hear this information. They're literally their back, your backyard neighbors in Bunker Hill. All right, so the floor is yours.
Okay, let me be upfront with you guys.
Bill, before, before you start, I would like to thank everybody and just would like to give you a brief introduction about our group. And also Kamal is online, he's our company CFO. The IFG Group is a US investment development management group of companies. The diverse portfolio includes construction, energy, investment and medical. The company currently has worldwide projects in many locations such as the United States, Africa, Turkey. And group handles all challenging projects throughout the world regardless of its locations. Its diverse portfolio covers a wide range of disciplines from architects, engineers, scientists, economists and management consultants. We had an excellent meeting today with county. Thanks to Ron and his effort to get this project developed. He's really working on it with us. The county is as excited as us and they promised us that it will expedite the permitting process and will assist us all the way through. And, and I would like to introduce Bill, our local architect. We worked with our, our office overseas to develop this project and introduce your project and answer, answer your questions.
So thank you, Mr. Fati, for the presentation and the information. And we definitely look forward to great collaboration and, and the presentation, but we're happy to have both of you guys here and the other members of your team as well.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Maiden. I'm the architect for 3200 Rhode Island. And I want to be upfront, this is my first time presenting something from my end. Most of the time I get presented too. So I might be a little awkward, but I have a lot of beautiful drawings on my screen here. I just need to make sure I can let you see them. My firm has been around for a long time. We started in 1978 and we incorporated in 1983. And I have a long history in Mount Rainier. I see all new faces now, but, but, but my history in Mount Rainier goes back to the late seventies and, and throughout the eighties. In fact, when my father-in-law had a little vacuum cleaner store on the hill, right around the corner from the courthouse. And I have also designed a few projects in Mount Rainier. And this site that I'm designing right now is my second design for the same site. It was a funeral home there at first and the funeral home guy died and the son died. And, and the father left the funeral business to the son, the son died. And I had a client who wanted to convert it to a church. And there's a little funny story that I'm going to tell everybody before we get started here about the funeral home. We were measuring up the building one day and it was myself and one of my sisters. And, and it was shortly after the guy who owned it died. And, and I was on the second floor and we were talking about why does funeral homes drain blood into the sewer system? And said that should be like a medical facility. And whenever we went into buildings, old buildings, we would leave the door open. But as soon as I said that, the door slammed closed. And, and my, and my assistant rushed out, jumped down the whole stairs and went to the front door if we didn't see anything. So I told, I told the pastor who was behind the building that I thought the building was haunted. And he said, he's not worried about it being haunted, he's going to preach all the spirits out of the building. So, so, but that's my history with this building that on the corner. But I've also done other projects with Mount Rainier. I did Rainier Avenue Sewer System. There was a storm sewer that we replaced. My, one of my associates, John Livermore, who just passed, he was the town manager of Mount Rainier and I was the, he was the official town manager, but he needed an architect from time to time. So I was the unofficial architect of, for the town. And one interesting project that I did with Mount Rainier was that we did sidewalks along, I can't remember the name of the school, but we did sidewalks studies along there. We also, right after the earthquake happened, which is one of the first major earthquakes in DC, right after that happened, I did studies on the historic building right behind the courthouse to see, to study cracks. Also, there's some studies on the police station. The generator was malfunctioning. And so, so, so I have a little history with Mount Rainier and, and this is by far the.
Bill, we have 10 minutes left, so.
Oh, okay, okay. This is by far the.
It's outstanding history, but the time is running.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, so we are proposing a 99-unit apartment building with retail on the ground floor. And let me see if.
Bill, do you have the, the images so we can put them up on screen?
Yeah, I have it. Let me see how, let me see if I can share here. They're on my desktop here. Let me click on share. Okay, wait a minute. Like I said, this is my first time doing this and.
We see a gray screen right now.
Yes.
You don't, you don't see it?
No.
Okay, wait a minute. I've been practicing all day trying to do this, but I couldn't do it without an actual meeting being taken place. We're used to meeting in person. The pandemic has caused us to change how we do things. So let me, let me see if I can, can share here.
Yeah, at this point, there's only a gray screen. If you want, you could also email them to the city clerk and she should be able to pull them up on her screen.
Oh, now we can see, we can see your web browser.
Yeah, but I can't see it. Okay. I'm sorry, guys. This is not what I'm, I'm good at.
We understand WebEx has a mind of its own.
Yeah, but also too, there are so many, we have WebEx and also Microsoft Teams that we do with and they all are different. Okay, I'm sharing my browser. Let me just email, let me email this somebody right quick. It'll take a second.
Yeah, you could email them here. I'll send you the link to who you could mail them to. Melissa W., right?
Okay. This is taking too long, it's too complex.
City Clerk at Mount Rainier and the. Here you go. That's, that's her direct email address. That's our city clerk and she's the one who put them up.
Okay, Mount Rainier, six clicks.
So in the meantime, as we get the slides, just to remind the members of the community, if you have, if you'd like to, if you have a question.
Oh, there we go.
Chat, we'll go ahead and call upon you.
You see something?
Perfect, perfect. Yep, yep. Nice and clear.
I.
Has it commented?
Yep, yes.
I, I share them with you. Some auto-design. I'm going to go one by one.
The screen is blank at this point.
We saw it for a second and now it's blank.
Yeah.
I'm going back to first one.
I can see it.
Okay. See it?
It's blank for me.
The second one.
Yeah, we see it.
I just see a black screen.
I just see a blank. I just see a blank screen too.
Can you do me a favor? I, I, it's only one mic open, please. At least I'll tell you my end, I see a blank screen and it sounds like it's a blank screen for quite a few of us. I'm not sure why. It's just a blank screen.
Well, the files are very big.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my one.
I, I see it as well, too.
You see it?
Yes.
Okay. If you're a member of the community, if you see a blank screen too, can you let me know? I see Mario has let me know that it's a blank screen for them as well. And I, I'm, I'm in two different systems and both are blank.
Can you see this?
No, it's black.
So all I see right now is, it says is reviewing your application and that's it. But I'll show you.
I, I know Selena, you have a Mac, I have a Mac. Jared, do you have a Mac too?
This is what I see right now.
I see it on my, my screen.
Android, but what I'm communicating on right now is an Android and I have a Mac. So I have both, both of them and neither one I could, I could see anything.
Very pretty.
Is there anyone that can, can see it who has a Mac?
I, I'm on a Chromebook. I can't see it. I saw for a second, now I can't again.
Yeah, it was the same for me. I saw for a second and it didn't disappear.
Can anybody see this?
I'm on a PC and it looks great.
Yeah, me too.
It's very pretty.
Okay, I'm on a PC also.
Also, my, my too, I'm on a Windows PC and I see clearly.
You may have been tested. Mayor Benitez, you're muted.
I said, it seems to be a divide between the Macs and the Androids. But yeah, all the Macs cannot see it. Oh, you're on a PC, can't see it neither. Do me a favor, can you guys send the presentation to, to Melissa? Or Ron, if you have it, you want to do a screen share, one of you guys, so that way our, our city clerk will have it maybe. That works a little better for us. This is like strike two for WebEx today, you know.
I'll send it. I have it. I'll send it.
All right, thank you, Ron.
Large file, though, it's a large file. Okay, Bill, which one did you, what, what, what did you want to show? Just the images and the design?
Yeah, just, yeah, just the exterior renderings because it gives the full view of the building.
Okay, I can get that. Okay, I can get that.
It, it shows what that corner would look like and, and those are some beautiful renderings.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, everyone. Um, technical difficulties are, are a real thing.
Well, it's also unfortunate that the WebEx doesn't allow you to practice with a dry run. You have to have an actual meeting in order to practice. You can't share with yourself. So, so, okay. Yeah, just the exterior ones, which would give us a full view of what that corner will look like.
Okay.
All right.
We are nearing completion of the construction drawings and, uh, for filing for permit. We're, we're, we're getting very close to that.
Okay. Melissa, you received the email already?
I'm getting it together.
Okay, perfect. So. Melissa, can you do me a favor? In the meantime, can you put the agenda up in front of us? Like until we get it together. Keep going. And you see if there's something small we could, we could go through. Yeah. Everything's very heavy.
Can we move number 11, the one on taxes, mayor?
Number 11?
Well, the one on the taxes, I can't see the number anymore.
Actually, I was gonna do number 13.
You raise it up higher so we can look, we're looking higher.
Number 13 is the presentation of February 8, 2020 legislative mini minutes. So we could take it out of the dock. All right, so-
And we, we can delay 11 until the next month.
Okay, so we'll make, we'll delay number 11, but number 13, uh, our city clerk, as we work on the technical, uh, this, uh, technical stuff on the background, I'm just gonna take a couple of things out of the agenda, okay? So for number 13, presentation of February 8, 2022, our city clerk has prepared the minutes for F, uh, for February 8, 2022. Uh, Council, please review the minutes. If you have any, um, edits, please submit to, um, Melissa by the end, um, of the week. Um, because they are gonna be going up for vote on the March 1st meeting. Okay? All right, and Jimmy, you said number 11, you wanted to take it out, right?
Well, yeah, it seems like time is, we, we have a time bomb today.
So I'm gonna go ahead and add to the agenda to remove that one. Let me see the other one. How are we doing, Melissa, on your end?
So, um, it's, uh, it's uploading to a Google Drive. It's a large file, but it's being sent to you right now. I sent it to you as a zip file, so it's loading now.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hopkins. And see, we also have the wonderful Rhonda Dallas on the line as well. On virtual meeting, welcome, Ms. Rhonda Dallas. I know you were here earlier.
How are you? I'm here. How, how's everyone? Good to, good to see everyone.
Doing fine, thank you. It's always great to, great to see you. I noticed you earlier, it's like I have not acknowledged her, but I definitely want to make sure I acknowledge you, um, as joining our for meeting. I know you're getting, um, are here also to hear about the wonderful and exciting, um, update for the Otis project.
Yes, indeed.
Okay. Let me see.
Is it possible, Mayor, that we could have some other discussion on the developer on the project?
I'm looking, um, from, you talking about the same exact point, Jimmy?
No, on this, uh, on this project, are there other things other than looking at the drawings? What the status is and where we're going? And I know we heard that they had a good meeting and maybe hear about that a little bit.
I can talk about that a little bit and Melissa's-
Go ahead, Mr. Hopkins.
Melissa's on his way, he should be getting in in seconds. So it was outstanding meeting today. Um, they are gonna expedite the permits. You know, we met with, uh, several members of their team. Um, everything seems to go. We have to submit, we're having a follow-up meeting set up with the county executive as far as waiving certain fees. But, um, everything looks good. Everything looks good so far. Um, and between Fatih and myself, we can answer any questions that you may have until the actual designs are being presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hopkins. I see it on the screen now. Um, I see Jared said he also could see it. Members of the audience, how are we doing? Uh, you can see it now? Okay, getting positive feedback from Luke, Mario. All right, perfect. All right, thank, thank you and thank you for, for putting up with, with the delay, guys. All right, so, um, Mr. Maiden, the floor is yours. Go ahead and, uh, talk us through what it looks like. And we do have, um, a cou- couple of questions after your presentation. I see Mario and Judy have both questions and I'll open up the floor out to them as soon as we're ready to, um, go ahead.
Yes, the building on, on, on the screen is the, um, the corner of Rhode Island and Eastern Avenue, uh, elevations of the building. The entrance to the building is off near the corner on the Eastern Avenue side. Although the address is 3200 Rhode Island, the actual lobby entrance is on the Eastern Avenue side. And all along Rhode Island Avenue side, you have shops. You have retail. And it could be various types of retail. It could be one big retail, but we, we envision restaurants, maybe a beauty salon, barber shop, um, a, um, a little specialty store, um, and so forth.
And a bank?
And a bank. And a bank. And, and, and like I mentioned in the earlier meeting, no liquor stores. God, I know the history right there. So, um, uh, and, and a bank. Now, one thing that we discuss about the bank, uh, would it have drive-through capability? The way the land is configured, we will have to have a, um, pneumatic type drive-through, um, from the Eastern Avenue side. There's an alley that ru- that runs behind the building. And, um, that alley, uh, uh, can be used, uh, to, um, uh, uh, have access from the Eastern Avenue so you can drive straight through. But, uh, it will be a pneumatic type teller, automatic, uh, teller, where you would not see a person through the window, but it will be a pneumatic tube that you would, uh, do your business with the bank. Um, it could be, what retail is-
I have a recommendation. I have to interrupt. Um, Mayor Benitez, can you have him just answer the questions that are in the chat? Cause I know we're kind of running out of time and it could be-
No, no, hold on, hold on a second.
That's, that's fine, guys.
Yeah.
I'll speak. He could present, we took a couple of things out of the, out of the dock to make sure he's able to, cause I know, uh, various neighbors that want to hear, uh, what he has to say, what it look, what the building looks like as well. Oops, sorry, I have more two mics open at the same time. So, Mr. Maiden, you could go through the presentation to at least show the pictures and stuff and then we'll open up the floor, okay?
Okay, but I don't see the pictures. I don't see the pictures.
So right now you just have the picture of the building?
Just that one picture.
Like?
Yeah, just that one picture on the screen, what I see.
Okay. Um, is there anything else you said, uh, Ron?
There's other pictures, um, so I don't know who's controlling it, I think Melissa. So if she can go to the next picture.
If she goes to the picture, I can-
So. Uh, Council, I'm gonna open up the floor to you guys as well, if you guys have any questions. I do see there's three, uh, four different questions, um, five different questions from two different people. And I'll open up the floor to them as well.
The picture on the screen shows the main part of the building. The other pictures are similar, just different sides of the building.
Okay. From my recollection, also, I believe these pictures are in the city website, correct, Ron? On the economic development tab?
Yes, they are, yes, they are. And I'll post the other drawings up, uh, tomorrow morning.
Okay, so, uh, you know what? Let's move forward, guys, uh, with the questions because at this, at this point, um, we're gonna, uh, spend more time trying to upload pictures than we are actually, uh, you know, uh, hearing it. So, Council, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up to you, uh, first. Uh, Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, my first question is, do you have the financing in order for the project? How much will it cost and then do you have the financing in order?
The, the construction, the complete development project is going to cost us about $36 million and financing is secured.
Great. Um, and then my next question is, how long will the permitting process take before construction can begin?
According to, eh, county today, eh, if we use third-party company to review our plan and submit it to the county, this might take two weeks to, uh, one month to get the permit.
Have you conducted the soil tests yet?
Yes, we did. We, we have a geotechnical report, yes.
Okay. So when sort of best-case scenario for groundbreaking and then worst-case scenario?
Well, um, the permits, as I understand today, where we talked about being third-party, once we submitted, you're looking at about two weeks after we submit to the third-party reviewer. But there's a process we go through before we get to the third-party reviewer. So you're probably looking at about two months total. And then when the constru- I, I, I'm also proposing, and we haven't talked yet with the correct people, to do the construction in two phases, uh, foundation to grade, uh, 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 construction, because there's a lot of concrete work and grading work in the ground that would take a while, uh, for a park, for the parking garage, which, which can also shorten the time of overall construction while the other parts of the project is being reviewed and approved. Um, so, but you're probably looking at, uh, two years for the total construction to be done?
Okay, so it would be, so it would be, are you guys looking at then, so two months from now, construction may start if all things go well. So that's June, let's say. And then, so that's June 2022. So June 2024, is that a realistic date?
That is a realistic date, yes. About two, about two years total now. Knowing how construction worked, when you put the qualifier in there, if everything goes well, that's a good term, that's a good term because that's always happens.
Yeah.
Okay, so-
It could be June 2025, but it could be, yeah, I got you.
Well, we're hoping not June 25, no.
All right, that's good.
Okay.
Some play between June 24 and June 25. I'm trying, I want to make sure I communicate effectively with residents and no one says, Luke told me it was June 2024. And that, so we want to make sure we're, um, uh, you know, level-setting expectations with everybody. Um, well, I just, uh, want to say thank you for doing business in Mount Rainier. I want to say thank you for securing the financing to do business in Mount Rainier. Um, I know that stuff is not easy. Thank you for putting in the time, putting in the work. We really appreciate it. And I think a lot of folks are, um, and I'll speak for myself personally, looking forward to more density within the downtown core of Mount Rainier because that will create the demand needed for, uh, uh, to sustain our businesses that are currently here and then to bring in some new businesses as well. So we just really appreciate y'all, um, picking Mount Rainier to do business. Um, and I will turn it over to everyone else for questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Luke. I think the other thing is like to point out, there's two different things between ribbon cutting and ground break. Um, because sometimes the ground break is more of a ceremonial thing. Doesn't mean it's like, you know, that day or the next day they're gonna start. I think it's more of, um, uh, of like a commitment to start the work, you know? So I want to make sure that it's, it's clear. Um, so I have, uh, Jimmy followed by Jared.
Uh, again, thank you, uh, Mr. Guna. Uh, there, there was a question we raised at the meeting we had about, uh, putting plywood, uh, like, uh, making it look like so people get excited about coming soon. Uh, I don't know if there's any, uh, aspect of when, when that will be done because we were hoping, you know, there'd be some kind of plywood, you know, the fence is falling down. We talked, uh, when, when that would be up.
As soon as, after the meeting, I asked my designer and my team to come up with, eh, first, the material that we should use. Eh, I am a bit worried if we put plywood. Eh, it might, you know, under weather, it might get bad and it might look ugly. And people use that to do some pains and put signs up and so on and so forth. So, eh, they are, eh, working on it, eh, and coming, coming up a, a design to-
Right.
Present me, then we will go from there.
The, the other thing that somebody raised with me, uh, was the number of stories. I thought you had said four, but looking at the drawing that's now on the, uh, screen, it looks like six.
It is, it is six.
Six floor, yeah.
It, it'll be in retail on the, retail and residential on the first or there'll be residential on, on, we said, two through six?
Residential two through six, retail on the first, parking below the retail and cellar.
That sounds great. Uh, we just hope and hoping the financing comes through. And thank you for investing and we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Jared?
Hey, I just want to say thank you for, um, coming in and, uh, you know, taking the time to do this presentation. And we really thank you for wanting to invest, um, in the city. And, um, you know, as Luke mentioned, you know, bringing some, um, residential density and, uh, you know, and, and, and commercial, new commercials as well is really gonna help, uh, continue to grow our, um, our downtown and, uh, the vitality, the walkability and so forth. So I just wanted to thank you again on that. Um, so Luke and, Luke and Jimmy asked most of the questions, um, that I was gonna cover, but I just wanted to clarify again, the, um, the underground parking, eh, and for residents on the, on the call, the underground parking is both for the, um, residential units uh, and it also includes a commercial, uh, parking for the commercial, um, locations as well, correct?
Yes, it does, but also behind the building on grade, there's a loading dock.
Okay.
And there's also a few commercial, at least, at least, uh, I think six or eight commercial spaces that could be used for the retail also.
Okay. And egress to those, um, to the garage is, uh, sorry, is on, it looks like it's on, I just want to clarify for folks, it's on Eastern Avenue, correct?
Yes, the, the, uh, access to the garage, that's a driveway.
Okay.
It's on Eastern Avenue at the north end of the building.
Okay.
And it goes behind the building, down a ramp. And it goes in a spiral, uh, circular, uh, ramp to get down to each level. Uh, there are elevators, uh, that goes down to the lowest level. In fact, there's four elevators. One of those elevators are a, um, is a, um, uh, uh, stretcher-sized elevator. Um, uh, but there's four elevators goes down to the lowest level and goes up to the penthouse level.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'll see the rest of my time.
Thank you so much, Jared. So we're gonna open up the community and then I'll have, uh, my feedback so that we could get to a few of them. Uh, Mario, um, Sisneros, you're up on deck, uh, you're up on the speaker list. Uh, go ahead, the floor is yours. Mario? If you want to go through your questions, up to you, but go ahead.
Yes, sorry, I was on mute. Can you hear me?
We could hear you.
Yes.
Yes, yes, good evening all. Thank you. I just want to mention, I mean, I saw a sign for this building that was, that's going up like two years ago. So tonight, I thought that we were talking, I thought that we, you know, the plans were done. I thought that the permit was obtained. I thought, I mean, I was hoping that this meeting was about just breaking ground, but I guess, I see, I see it's still on the works. Yeah, I guess you answered one of my questions. I guess, yeah, you said the parking, the entrance to the parking lot are gonna be on Easter Avenue.
Yes.
Which is excellent. Then also, the other question for me was, I guess, are we, are you guys gonna be able to like to park in front of the building on Easter Avenue? As you know, as you know, the sidewalk on that side of the building belongs to DC. There is like, there is at least like fifteen feet from the curb to the inside belongs to DC, right? So I'm assuming that you guys are also talking with DC about this, I guess, parking issues and entrance to the building, right?
We did not show any street parking at all. The street area will be used just for drop-off?
No, which is, is fine. I mean, to me, I will prefer it because some kind of parking, because this, this street, Easter Avenue is a dangerous, is a dangerous street at the moment. People drive so fast. I mean, I live, I just live right on the border. I live also on Perry and in Easter Avenue. My house faces, the backyard faces Easter Avenue. And to me, I mean, I'll be glad if there's a street parking there, because that will slow down, you know, the traffic, so. But I guess, I mean, I guess that's all the questions I have and thank you. I mean, I'm looking forward, I don't know, to see something go up in this corner. I guess it's been more than twenty years since this was an empty lot. I know it was the funeral home before, but, you know, it's been an empty lot. I would say it's a headache for Mount Rainier. And I'm really glad and happy that something is going up. Thank you.
We're pushing the hardest we can to get it done and get it started.
And just one more thing, also, you said that you are going to use third-party inspectors.
Yes.
Okay, right? And then you say, but I know the process, so I know that the third-party inspector comes and checks. And you said that can take two weeks to a month. But then, then of course, you have to send that back to the, to Prince George's County Permit Office, right? For their review and how long that's gonna take for the, for the Prince George's County to issue the permit?
The third-party plan review is approved basically once it goes to the county. The county issues the permit, so usually, usually that's a week or so, from the time they get it from the third-party. It depends on their workload, but it's not a long time.
All right, thank you. Thanks. That's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mario. Judy and Dana have Carla. Go ahead. Judy, are you there?
Yes, yes, I'm muting myself.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just very curious to understand what impact the project is going to have on the alley in the back. I know there are, in the alley, there are residences. Is the building going to impact that alley at all?
The alley is gonna remain.
And there's not gonna be any entrance to the building from the alley?
No. The building is--
Okay. And I don't understand what you were talking about, the bank using the alley, where, not the, not the back?
Well, the alley is just for access. If you drive into the driveway from Eastern Avenue, you have two options. You can turn around and go back, or you can go straight through and exit through the alley. It just depends. That part we have not worked out yet, because there's no bank committed yet. So, so once we get commitments from a bank, we would, we would design how the egress and access will work. But the alley is not intended to be used as a thoroughfare. It's just, it's just intended to be maintained just as an alley. Just the way it is now.
Oh, that's good, yeah. I don't, yeah, I was getting concerned about any increase in traffic in that alley.
Now, we have a wide driveway on the Eastern Avenue side that leads to the parking garage.
Okay.
So, so, and that driveway is wide enough for a vehicle to go to a teller
Okay.
and then make a U-turn and go straight back. In fact, there is no thoroughfare from the Eastern Avenue side to the alley. You can walk back there, or you can drive up through the alley and walk to the back of the building, but there's no vehicleway from this building directly to the alley.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Judy. I have Carla, followed by Dylan. And let me see, County Councilmember Dane Tavarez is on deck as well, as well. Okay, so Carla, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Yes, I just have a quick question. I might have missed the beginning part. But are these units rental or condos?
Mr. Gunnar can answer that?
It will be condo.
These will be condo units?
Correct.
Thank you. And I, I think I heard, I wasn't sure if it was management that were asking if all the financing had been met. And someone said, yes. Has that been verified with Mount Rainier management, just to?
We provided Mount Rainier a letter from the bank that the financing is secured. And we are constantly in touch with banks as well, updating them the status of the project. They are online with us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, perfect. And also, Mr. Kamal Krtudas would like to say a word, so. Thank you so much, Carla. Dylan? Dylan is French. Hi, the floor is yours?
Yeah, I'm actually presenting in a few minutes about the arts project on Otis Street. But I just want to sort of make a quick question about whether there's any considerations of the arts community with this building, given that for the Gatesway Arts District, it is very quite literally the gateway to DC, being on the corner of Eastern and Rhode Island. Thank you.
Well, from a design point of view, we tried to make it fit in to, as being an arts building. I remember when the, the arts started on the other side of the street. So the consideration is to create a beautiful building and, 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 and make it look like it's, 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 it's an official gateway to Mount Rainier and to DC. So we, we want it to be compatible with the arts district.
Yeah, the other thing to point out is that we have various artists, you know? So if you guys are doing internal art in the building, so, so, you know, consider the various artists when it comes to purchasing art. Okay, all right. So moving on to the next, Danny, County Councilmember Dane Tavarez, your next on deck. I could read, I could read. So the units, how many units work? Can you like reemphasize again, Mr. Fati? Was it ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine units.
How many? Ninety-nine units?
Ninety-nine units, yeah.
Are they all market rate? Okay.
All market rate. All market rate.
All market rate. So what's the average price projected?
Three, three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, it's a condominium?
Condom inn, yeah.
Right. So Danny, your other questions were any green features, green roof, water encashment, et cetera?
The building has a green roof. And in fact, this building would qualify highly for a LEED certification.
Excellent. What color? Silver or gold?
We think platinum. Because almost everything in this building is recyclable, from the concrete to the bricks, to everything. So, so, so I want to talk to Mr. Gunnar about having a commission. But it is, but it's, but it's very green, I should say it like that.
Okay, so just, just to give you kind of a, a gauge, there have been other similar, well, these are rental. I'll give you that. These are rental buildings that we've built, similar in number and such. And they were, the owners did invest approximately somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred to, well, in, in two buildings, they did two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of art. So that just gives you a, a ballpark figure in all throughout the building. And so that, that lets you know how much of a stamp we're expecting in terms of your participation in the arts district. And the meet, the, the presentation, I would venture you to stay. So to see what we're about to present is game-changing. And so if you could just stay on a couple of more minutes and listen on, you'll be pleasantly surprised what we're about, what we are about to present. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Danny. Mr. Kamal Krtudas, the floor is yours?
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor Benitez and members of the council members, I'd like to first thank you for last minute, doing the sort of the jigsaw puzzle with the agenda. And I realize that, we apologize for that. Just wanted to give you folks that. Who am I? Why am I here? I'd just like to, for members of the, I guess, the public, just so they know, the owner of the current parcel right now that's there, it's just so for the members of the public, they know who's who and who does what. I just thought it would be appropriate just to identify, just the basics, just so everybody has an idea as to who's who. You folks have seen, talked to Mr. Gunner. He is from IFG Group. And he's going to be taking the charge on the construction side. You all folks know about Mr. Maiden. He's the architect. The owner actually of the parcel itself is thirty-two hundred Rhode Island Avenue LLC. This LLC is actually owned by a parent company. Parent company is called Gazmer, Gazmer LLC. And if you want to check out to see what this company has done in the past, I just sent the link into the chat room. Feel free to click on it. Take a look at some of the projects we have done, which Mr. Gunner has also worked with us on many of those projects. And just so folks, everybody knows who's who, what's what, I think that sort of transparency would help. Thank you very much for the time.
Now, thank you so much for also being here for that information as well. As you heard from our committee members, they're very eager to see something go up, something that reflects our community and our county and who we are. So I appreciate the presentation. Jimmy, you have something? Jimmy, if you open up the floor right now, it'll be around to you. Go ahead, Jimmy. Your mic is close, Jimmy. Go ahead.
This is in response to what he just said. So is it thirty-two Rhode Island Avenue is actually the owner, which is part of Gazmer, and IFG is only doing the, is the construction part? And who actually purchased it back two years ago? Was it, was it Gazmer or was it, who actually purchased it when it was eventually done? I'm just trying to understand the ownership issue there, then I'll be quiet.
Yeah, clearly. The, it was, the name of the entity that purchased it was thirty-two hundred Rhode Island Avenue LLC.
Jimmy, does that answer your question?
And, and just, and IFG is just doing the construction part of it?
No, IFG is owner and developer.
Okay, later discussion, we can have it another time. Thank you.
So I definitely would say, I think we also need to keep in mind that when this space got purchased, it was right at the beginning of pandemic. Luke, help me if I remember something correctly, but, you know, we were definitely, I think we all were like concerned about how the pandemic was gonna affect. And we do appreciate you guys came through with the payment of the land. The land is to belong to City of Mount Rainier. And you guys followed through in the purchase, even, even through, you know, all the scare of the pandemic. So we do appreciate that that, you know, that you guys followed through. And because then somebody else could have backed up and said like, look, the pandemic's coming and we might have to take a step back and you guys didn't. So I'm definitely happy to, thank you guys for making sure you guys follow through. And you guys made a commitment to the city and you guys didn't back down. So I think that's something definitely important to mention. And we look forward to having a beautiful building. Mr. Hopkins, I know you have been working with, with the collectives to make sure you have accessibility to the county and various things that they need. It's definitely appreciated. Anything else you need to add, Mr. Hopkins, Mr. Kamali? And I'll move on to the next item.
Hope everything is well. Fati, do you want to add anything?
No, thank you so much indeed. It was a great meeting.
Thank you so much. And we look forward to the groundbreaking and as well as the ribbon cutting. Luke, I'm sorry, Luke, go ahead. My apologies.
No, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add one thing to piggyback on what Danny said about the artists. The city of Mount Rainier has the Mount Rainier Arts Commission. So if you drive through Mount Rainier, you'll see the art mural on Penny Rail Station. And then if you turn up, that was its first year of creations, it's two years ago. And then if you go up this street, there's another mural on Thirty-Fourth Street, which was their project last year. This year, they're working on their next project. So that Arts Commission has jurisdiction over this section of town here, the downtown core. So that could be an entity that has already mentioned this project is someone, something they'd like to work with. So it'd really get mad at me if I didn't shout out that they're looking forward to working with somebody on what can be done here, working with residents in this community, artists in this community, and the larger DMVR community as well, to see what could be done to promote the arts at this intersection here.
Notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Definitely, we are a hub for the arts and we love the artists. That's part of who we are. And I did mention Miss, Rhonda Dallas was also here. You know, this is, it's also a great resource of information as well. County Councilmember Dane Tavarez, Ron Hopkins, the Arts Commission, so I'm very happy. Also, City of Mount Rainier Business Association present here as the Larry as well. So thank you guys for joining. And I'd like you guys to, please ask you guys to stay for the second part, because it's definitely very exciting. I know we're running really, really a little behind, but I'll catch you guys up to make sure we get us out of time, okay? All right, thank you guys for coming and stay up for the next part. Melissa, can you put up to the agenda, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Presentation, discussion, and proposal of the seventy-five thousand dollar CPI funds on the county FY twenty-two budget allocation for South Skate Park Playground update, as well as presentation, oh, sorry. DMRC Councilperson received a presentation for County Councilmember Dane Tavarez, the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, Department of Parks and Recreation, Prince George's County, and the proposed seventy-five thousand dollar CPI funds for the county FY twenty-two budget allocation for South Park Skate Park and Playground. And we are gonna have that followed by the presentation on Otis Street Building Artwork Proposal. They're kind of together, you know? Because it'll be a review to the whole side of it. Go ahead, Danny. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can we, I'm sorry, is, is, is the, is parking planning here? On, in the meeting?
We are here, Danny.
We're here.
This is Laura Conley and I'm on with Tanya Hedgepath, um, and we're ready to present.
Okay.
Perfect. Uh, thank you. Um, thank you both for waiting and, and being careful, all three of you. Go ahead, Danny.
No, I, 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 I felt cruel if I told you, can you flip it?
Um, you're a.
But if you're pressed for time, I, I'll understand because I think the, the mural, when, once you see the mural project and how it will be, um.
Tied together?
Yeah. I think the other folks can go.
Do you guys want to flip the presentation? Is that what you guys are asking me?
Is, is the presentation on the screen now?
It is.
Oh, okay, great.
Um, so, go ahead.
Your presentation is on the screen right now.
Okay, do you want me to take mine off?
So let's do the oldest building first because you're right, I'll give you the ambiance of what it looks like, especially for the South Park and the, in the thirty-seven slash mainly oldest side of, uh, the South Park. Okay, so Liz, can you guys, um, have the oldest presentation, um, up, whoever has it?
Hey, that is, that is me. This is Dylan French here.
Hello, Dylan.
How are you?
Doing fine, thank you. I thank you for also being here.
I believe I have mine.
Yeah, and I also want to let up, and I want Laura and Tanya to see also what was happening or what we're proposing because it'll also feed into what we want them to do
Okay.
with the park. And I think it's, you know, once you bring it all together, it's kind of really exciting.
So Danny, do you want to do a presentation for this? Do you want to do an, uh, introduction for this part and open the floor to Dylan?
Well, I just want to kick it off.
All right, go ahead.
Hand over the mic.
Real, real quickly, I need to restart WebEx so I can share my screen. So I'm gonna disappear for fifteen seconds, so forgive me.
Yeah, so don't worry.
Just start in, you restart your screen.
Yeah, so, so do your thing while I, I, I kind of kick it off. So, you know, this is my final year in office and I feel like my, when I began my term here, um, in District Two, I started it in, um, in Mount Rainier and, and in Brentwood and basically in, in this strip right here of the Gateway Arts District, in addition to the, the addition. I, there were three really key buildings that, that I felt, you know, would really start changing the riverfront at West Hyattsville, um, the addition, which is across the street from the mall at Prince Georges, which is, was also being renovated. And, and this strip from, from, uh, Thirty-eighth all the way down to Eastern. And, and I just, and in particular to that, we specifically, we started at the Singer Building. That was one of the key buildings that, you know, we kind of kicked it off. Um, the, a lot of the change. And I know you guys have a stellar individual in Mr. Hopskin, um, here. And so I said, wh- where can, what can I do now in my last year to drop the mic? So to speak. You know, as my last hurrah. And how can we bring the world, literally the world and the nation to Mount Rainier? And this is a response to that question. I sat down with Mr. Dylan French. I had him, well, I was the one getting liquored up at Era, but he was doing good. Uh, he was chilling there and we, we, uh, we had a good conversation. And we had some amazing ideas of what we wanted to do to transform, um, Mount Rainier and, and bring the world to Mount Rainier. And on that, let me kick it off to him and and nobody company will, will kick it off. Thank you so much. And it's been an honor to serve you and I cannot wait to make this a reality before, before I leave office. So that's how quick we're gonna talk about what's gonna happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. We appreciate all the work and effort you have put, um, towards the city and the whole entire district. Um, Mr. Dylan French, the floor is yours. And we definitely could see your presentation on the screen. Dylan, can you, uh, hear us?
It's muted.
You're muted, uh, Dylan. Yeah, he's muted. Let me see. Dylan, you might be giving us a great presentation, but nobody, none of us could hear you. Can someone text him?
And just let him know. Can the host put everybody on mute and then try to let him come off?
Am I there?
He, he's there now.
Okay, sorry.
We can hear you now.
I apologize. That was, that was silly. I was in full screen, so I kind of lost it.
No problem. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Cool, cool. Um, just a real quick, first, uh, thanks to the council, Mayor Benitez, and a special thanks to, uh, council member Tavares. Um, I am relatively new to this ownership. Um, I've been in the Rhode Island Avenue District with, with, uh, the former Giannetti Studios for about the past year, but, um, really love the area, really love the arts district and just want to give everybody a quick thank you for, for allowing me to present today. So I'm gonna try to hit a lot of stuff relatively quickly. Um, I am a bit rusty. It's been about three years since I've presented anything, so forgive me if I lose my words or anything, but we're here to go, good to go. So, um, essentially, just want to give you a little background on the buildings that I purchased. Uh, we closed on this in November of last year. Um, it is a really interesting project for me personally. My dad was a railroader. I like industrial buildings. I like artists and, and, and I like solar farms and all sorts of stuff. And so this was really a perfect storm for me personally. Um, these, this compound of buildings had been owned by the same family for nearly sixty years. And, um, we really were attracted to it for its involvements in the, in the arts district. So at current, it is a hundred percent occupied across four buildings, fifty-four thousand square feet. Currently fifty-five plus artists that are, that are there currently and, and two non-art related businesses, one community garden. And, uh, we still have two additional buildable lots. And so, um, a lot of my friends are in the DC, uh, and expanded arts community. And I know that there is a huge shortage of studio spaces. And so the Gateway Art District has always been a great attraction to me. And, um, we aim to really do something that's cool and keeps this a, a, a very sort of neat development as we move forward. So that is a little bit of where we were. Um, when we sort of first thought, started out going after this, there were a bunch of goals that we set out. The building needs to be financially, uh, stabilized, which we're in the process of doing in the next two months. Um, but we also want to improve artist utilization because the mark, the, the buildings themselves have kind of had a bunch of deferred maintenance. Um, some of them are being basically used as storage. So getting some more artists in some of those underutilized spaces, I think we'll actually be able to get up to about seventy-five artists for the full compound, um, before we, before we build any sort of additional square footage, uh, just based on the way that the current utilization is really inefficient and, and not being activated incredibly well. Um, again, a bunch of deferred maintenance, so we, we want to improve the facilities because so too often with artists, they get the buildings that are cheap and then once they start to make them nice, developers come through and then all of a sudden we just have this thing. And so in the past thirty years, um, a lot of the artists have been pushed out of DC, which is, uh, clearly no surprise to anyone. But also artists aren't really able to pay thirty-five dollars a foot, like which is what they're doing right now for studio space in Northwest DC. So, um, by having such a large compound and, and really investing in it properly as an arts community, we want to really kind of make that more permanent so that in five and six years, ten years, whenever it is, that property values start to be able to push us out. We're gonna have such a stronghold, um, that the, the community stays relatively permanent. Um, admittedly, I have a, a marketing business and we moved into Blagden Alley about ten years ago, which Blagden Alley used to be a very big arts community and now it's a lot of Michelin restaurants. And I kind of realized that I might have been the harbinger of doom, bringing in a creative business into that environment. So I'm trying to do some good with the success that we've had and, and really create, um, a really good, robust, active, permanent art space, um, and make that a place that is a, as a destination for other artists. Um, given my friends in the arts community, I basically already got a waiting list for people who are like, the moment you have a spot, I'm moving out of DC and I'm moving over to your buildings. So making the, making the space strong enough that we attract really good working artists, um, and make that a, a really safe, long-term home for them. Uh, the buildings have a tremendous amount of flat roofs. Um, there are great SREC recommendation or availability with the DC government and we're actually on the DC power grid. So, um, we are actually going to harvest a whole bunch of solar energy, which I'll give you a, a bit more information about because that is also important. Um, I'm young enough that I really still care about all the environmental things and, and, uh, we're, we're definitely trying to make that a part of essentially subsidizing the rent for the artists. You know, we don't have to necessarily go to full market rent because the roofs are gonna be generating a fair bit of revenue by themselves, uh, with the investment that we're gonna make. Um, upwards of three hundred and thirty-three megawatts per year, um, should be coming off our roofs in the future. So, um, we really want to protect that community. We want to really become a cornerstone of the Gateway Art District because again, we like that, we like that environment. And, and really anybody who loves arts that comes to DC needs to come to Mount Rainier, um, based upon what we're gonna be doing with that space. So the, the, the big picture stuff, that's, those are the sort of the overall goals that we have. In order to do that, we have a, a few other things that we need to do first because there is such a huge amount of deferred maintenance. So from an infrastructure standpoint, we really need to come through, re-point a lot of the brick, we need to restucco a lot of it. The, the lighting kind of leads to an unsafe environment back there. And three of the five roofs are already failing. So in the next six months, we're gonna be doing a big, um, capital investment from a, a roof standpoint, hopefully opening up the lighting. I literally had a crew of guys back there digging out the rear curb on Wells Avenue because so much of the, the dirt from the railroad had pulled over it. So I've pulled out, you know, probably a ton of dirt two weekends ago. Um, just trying to make sure that the, the streets got a little bit wider and, and had a little bit more access and parking and all those sorts of things. Again, the solar installation is part of that capex, um, that we're doing. Um, and, and like I said, there will be a, a huge amount of, of solar energy that is produced off of that on our, on a annualized basis. And with the DC SREC, we'll be generating a fair bit of revenue that should subsidize rents at a number of about three to four dollars per foot, um, to keep those below market for the artists that are there. Uh, and that is a, that is a number that should persist over at least twenty years. Um, there's a small community garden right there. That's, that's currently done as a, as a no gain, uh, free lease. Um, and we actually, just in the past two weeks, purchased the sixty-five hundred square feet of, of lot next to it. Um, so we are likely are gonna be expanding that community garden with the, with the help of local citizen Tom Little, who runs that one currently. And, you know, in the next two or three years, if we get to the point where we need to start building more of our studio space, there are a couple of parcels on our property that are not really developable just because of the way that the, the, the water table and everything is. Um, so we've, we've already got a contingency plan where we would move that community garden because I like being helpful to people in the neighborhood and, and I don't think they should necessarily have to pay for the access to growing their own food. I grew up in Kentucky growing my own food, so it's a, it's a pretty easy thing for me to, to understand as well. And then, like I said, with the, with the widening of the road and things and digging out the thing, just general cleanup, the buildings are, are in pretty bad shape right now. So once we just get them to good solid walls, bought it in and paint in white, they're gonna be a, a dramatic improvement, which will lead us to the ability to do what my real passion is for this project, which is to turn the entire area into a public mural park. Um, there is a neighborhood in Miami that started out about twenty years ago where they were sponsoring murals by sort of international and famous artists. And that became a thing though, that perpetrated art Basel and, and really built a, a large festival that, that happens in Miami. And my friend actually is one of the people who helped sponsor that initially. He's a, he runs Miami Ad School, who I teach for at times. And so we're gonna try to do a miniature version of that. Uh, we've got a really nice group of buildings that have a really good common space with them. And the idea is to go through and, and mural these buildings and, and sort of really manifest the art that we want to, we want to be creating back there. Um, the idea is to have thirty to forty percent of that be local artists, sixty to seventy percent be international artists so that we can elevate our local talent while also attracting audiences from outside the DC region because we're gonna have murals from, uh, artists who have names and have international reputations and have gallery shows. Um, and a lot of that goes again to my personal network, but we have good ways to bring those people in because we really want to elevate the local talent. Um, so what we did is model up the, the neighborhood just to kind of show you what it would look like. And so I have a few renders here that we can go through where we have just applied some placeholder art, uh, to the models to kind of show what these buildings are gonna look like as we, as we sort of bring color and vibrancy to the, the working artists who are in these studios. Um, so I'm happy to provide this, this proposal afterwards for you all to take a look at these because I know we're pressed on time and I'm just gonna sort of blow through them pretty quickly. Um, but essentially these big sort of rotting buildings right now, once they get roofs and solar energy, are gonna have really vibrant, colorful art that's both local and international and should be a place that we are drawing the kind of people that we want to be able to do to draw attention to it. Um, there is one building that I don't own, which is the building currently on the left right here. Um, and I've talked with that owner. He has agreed to let us paint his buildings. So we've got additional few walls that come with that, um, and help create a much more sort of large experiential, uh, thing that where if you're in between the buildings, you're gonna have eight or ten murals and everything's gonna be online aside and there's not gonna be a whole lot of industry back there. It's just gonna be a lot of, of really cool art, photographic opportunities and, and just help bring some energy back to the working artist, bring some more foot traffic back so that those artists can make more money and, um, and, and sort of put us on a map from, from an arts perspective. Um, so just, again, some mockups from what currently are, are not the greatest looking buildings, which will hopefully in the future be quite nice looking buildings. So, um, that is the, the general idea of what we're trying to do. And the nice thing is, is that that energy, that crowd, those people that we're trying to bring back, um, it, it opens up a lot of future potential. Um, I personally, and this is kind of an odd one, but I have a lot of friends who are professional skateboarders. And so the proximity to the Mount Rainier Skate Park, which is, I believe, what, uh, council member Tavares is gonna be talking about a little bit here too, um, is, is important to us. And that skate park is kind of a street park, but a lot of the skaters that I know that are the coaches for the Olympians, like we were with three or four weeks ago, the, the silver medalist from Japan, who's a thirteen-year-old, uh, from Japan was in town training and they went to the skate park that my friends built in Woodbridge, uh, DC. Um, and they were like, man, it'd be great if we had one over here because this is what the buildings are gonna be. And, and once we have all the murals and everything, it'll be, you know, this is a situation where we'll be in magazines, skateboarding magazines, Thrasher magazines, we're gonna have Olympian like type levels, uh, skateboarders back there. And, and that community in itself is, is tied very closely to the notion of street art and muralism. So we have connections with the Tony Hawk Foundation. I have some money that I want to put into it. But one of the things that is, is really important in kind of the phase two of, of getting these buildings up to, up and going is, is bringing in a, a community that's not entirely arts-driven, but is adjacent to the arts, which is that skateboarding community. And so we want to, we want to put in a bowl because the Olympics skate in bowls and there's, there's a whole sort of different style than what the, the, the park that currently is there. Um, but that is a, a sort of phase two that, that we're looking to do. Um, as I mentioned before, there's also a couple of empty buildable lots and, you know, just sort of cursory me drawing on maps. We can, we can add, you know, if it's two or three stories, we can add another thirty-five to forty thousand square feet of, of studio space, which given the demand that I'm currently seeing from the fact that my phone rings about once a week with somebody I've never met saying, I hear you have studio space and I hear it's affordable. Um, I'm, I think that makes a whole lot of sense. In addition to that, I've got a few friends who run galleries in DC that have been established for twenty-plus years and have generally operated in, in shoulder spaces where they take leases for two or three years until an existing lease runs out. Um, and they have expressed interest in building, um, in the new, in any sort of new building, uh, a permanent, a permanent gallery that we could use to showcase, um, members of the community and, and people who are, who are using their studios in that space. So as we look at what some of those new buildings are, studios, galleries, um, and then just the addition of when you build new buildings, you get more walls to put more murals up. Um, and to the notion that the murals are gonna be such a strong attraction, the whole back of my property faces the railroad tracks and the more people we get back there, all those sorts of things. I, I've considered the notion of even building a wall along the far side of Wells, uh, Wells Avenue, where if you did a ten to twelve foot wall, you could go almost three hundred feet. And that would give you very, it would give you a safety barrier, but it would also give you some additional space to add some more murals. So, um, I've talked to a couple of the other, um, building owners in the area, Langdon Hampel, with the, with the building that's nearer to, to Eastern Avenue that actually borders mine. And we've talked about putting a, uh, with the community garden, perhaps a sculpture garden and, and kind of creating a walkway because he wants to mural his buildings and, and sort of growing this to be a, a bit of an arts walk and, and, and more physical arts community that can expand into. and more physical arts community that can expand into sort of other other buildings that I don't own. But this is the this is the sort of first step to it. So, you know, looking at the current space, we currently have room between 17 and 21 murals, which is that's if we split up some of the really long walls, which I think probably makes sense to do. And then if we build those additional buildings and build the wall in the back, we can get up to 30. And, you know, with that being split between local and international, you're talking about maybe 20 international named artists who would be attracting people because it is a giant outdoor gallery. And that and that is, of course, with the with the permissions of the neighboring buildings to be included in that. So just real quick, I sort of mocked up what a lot of this stuff is going to be costing me. My brick and stuck work is incredibly cheap because one of my very good friends is a is a brick mason. So I am getting that at a cut rate cost. We're going to add some additional lighting. We have to fix the roofs and we're going to do the solar installation on it. And then the murals are going to have a certain cost that varies a little bit because some artists are going to be at a $5,000 fee, some are going to be 25 or 50 or whatever. And I don't really anticipate ever spending 50, largely just because I can activate a network and get get quotes at a better price for sort of artists who have a reputation and a set fee. So between 17 and 21 murals with an average fee between $5,000 and $25,000, I sort of just did a full range of where those prices are going to be coming out to kind of see what that looks like. But again, I'm hoping to be able to keep costs and make sure that as much money as I can goes to the artist for doing the work. So there is a little bit of additional stuff here. I'm buying my own cherry picker because I'm a weirdo and I like heavy equipment. But also, the rentals on these things are absolutely crazy. And so when we're doing brickwork and we're doing murals and all those things, I'm going to need to have one of these for the next 10 months. And so I'm just buying ones. And then I'm going to own one and all my friends who are muralists are going to be able to use mine instead of renting one. And I'm going to make all the murals in the city cheaper. But it'll just allow us to sort of amortize that over as opposed to like having a monthly expense that's going towards $8,000 to have a cherry picker so that we can have these muralists come in and fix the brickwork and all those sorts of stuff. So it'll make the maintenance of the murals a lot easier. It'll make us, if we have a wall that wants to rotate every year or so, or we have a guest artist or a residency come in and we can give one wall, it'll allow us to sort of turn over and keep the art fresh and make sure that everything is doing exactly what it needs to. Additionally, because of who my friends are and who my advisors are, who I'm working with this, we have a lot of sponsorships and client relationships, frankly, with with some paint suppliers. So Sherman Williams has offered to give us basically all the bulk paint for free. Montana Cans is the really, really high-end art spray paint. And we have really good relationships with them to get them at at or below cost and to a large degree, a lot of times free. And then Graco is a partnership that we have where we get large industrial sprayers. So being able to get the buildings in shape and then be able to do the artwork at a scale with the technology available, most of that stuff will be at or no cost. And that makes sure that whatever money we are spending is going to the artist because I want that to be 95%. You know, I want I want as much money going to that as opposed to going to materials and overhead, that sort of stuff. So just a little bit of information about me and my partner on this. Me and my partner own a marketing agency in Washington DC. We're pretty large. We do a lot of Fortune 50 clients. We work with Verizon and Amazon and all these sorts of things. And I've built a pretty successful business around Nike and Google and blah, 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 you know, name drop, name drop, rain drop. But we've always been really tied into the arts community because of our location in Blackdon Alley. So we paid for a lot of the murals that are in the DC Alley Museum. If everybody's seen the Love mural that pops up on Instagram, I paid for that. We host we host art all night events in DC. We've actually commissioned several artworks in our in our office. There's the one that's behind me, which is from a gentleman in Miami who's quite famous named Hawks. And it is, it's just a thing that's sort of always been endemic to our business. So me and my partner set up a completely separate company using the exact same name as our as our marketing agency in order to specifically develop this as a big arts community and destination for for the people who work in creative arts. And so through that career, we've also found some good partners and advisors who have all signed on explicitly to help out on this project. Chief among them is Kelly Towles, who is the organizer of the DC Walls mural, which used to be called Powwow DC. But all the murals that are in Noma, those when they put up 30 new ones every year, Kelly is the one who travels around the world and brings the artists in to do those murals. And so as a curator and just liaison to the painters of the world, Kelly is the guy that lets us get the painters cheaper because he's friends with them. And we can find other commissions and give them gallery shows and all that. Tim Tate is a client, excuse me, is a tenant actually at the buildings and is a really well-renowned glass artist and founder of Washington Glass School. He is so overboard and in favor of the sort of cursory plans that I've showed him. He put me in touch with George Cook, who is the founder of Artomatic. He is just already chomping at the bit to be able to to do programming back there, festivals, live events, open studios, and help build a bigger festival around the around the location. My good friend Bill Warrell is the founder of the 930 Club and used to run a club called DC Space in DC, which is the both of those were just kind of the havens of punk and art jazz and all those things in the 80s. And then one of my former employees is actually an artist based in Hyattsville, a ceramicist, and she helped lay out this deck for me. And I've got a pretty large community of artists and connections around me, both in terms of funding and and talent, that we're going to have a pretty, pretty good team working on this and making sure we have a really, really good space for it. So that said, I've got a contact, I've got a logo. But for the most part, that is what we have currently planned. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Perfect, Dylan. I'm going to start with Jimmy, Luke and Jared. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Well, it sounds very exciting and we were worried about some developers buying the properties who were concerned with the art and your designs are just amazingly great. There has been concern of some of the ongoing residents about, you know, raising the rents and making it unaffordable. I know it's all about the bottom line. Is there any ability to kind of grandfather some of the people who've been there for a long time? I know one of our, you know, local businesses, H&amp;W Printing and some of our artists have been there for, you know, kind of 15 and, you know, 15, 20 years. And is any, we have any ability to kind of grandfather some of these, some of the artists so they don't have to, so they can stay there? Because it's nice to have people from DC, more money come in, but we really don't want to kind of make it so that the people who've been here for so long aren't allowed to stay. And that's been a concern that's been raised to me.
Can we, can we, before you answer that, Dylan, can I jump in?
Yep.
So, so basically, we are looking to, I don't know if you want to speak, Rhonda, but we were looking to work with the Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council and Rhonda Dallas specifically to bring her to the table as a fiduciary agent and 501(c)(3) recognized entity in good standing in the county to be able to funnel some of this money, about $200,000 that we would like to put towards this effort. That's the first thing. Second, I don't know if Dylan can speak to the fact that this is one of my concerns as well. And this was why this was so exciting, that the use of the solar panels along the corridor there would be offset to basically reducing the cost of power in the building that can offset to be used to offset and reduce the rent or at least maintain the rent as they are now. And we can, kind of the way they do with rent control departments, the new people probably pay at a higher. But I mean, I'll, he could talk about rightsizing the rents. But I think that there is, while there is concern, I think that we are also trying to figure out ways to ensure affordability is maintained in these buildings. And that's what's so exciting about having somebody like Dylan buy the properties. There's an ulterior motive that comes with that. But I don't know, and Rhonda, I don't know if you want to add a couple of words regarding your current process in terms of what you are applying for or how you're also helping and look for additional dollars?
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, this particular project just touches on so many points as far as what the vision for the arts in the county is all about. This particular area is the home of some of the most renowned, internationally acclaimed artists in Prince George's County. So when you look at people like Martha Jackson Jarvis and Valerie the Bars and Tim Tate, of course, all of these artists, Michael Janis, Alonzo Davis, they have done spectacular public art projects across the country. And so to and internationally. And so to make this the destination, it just makes my heart sing. I attend Art Basel every year. And this is something that I think, working with Councilmember Tavares and talking to Ronald and the mayor, it's just a dream that's coming true. And so I just want to say, just thank you. Thank you, Dylan, for bringing this to us because there was concern. The artists, we talked extensively about their fear of being displaced. As you mentioned, it's happening in the District of Columbia. So what I'm doing now, there are a lot of opportunities and working with Councilmember Tavares, we do have a budget enhancement piece that that's been placed for this year's budget through the county. And there are other sources as well, as far as redevelopment grants, the NEA. And it's in, we have a track record of securing like our town grants and, you know, these larger scale project grants. And so anything that I can do to assist in this, I'm just there. And I'm just excited that it's happening in Mount Rainier because I've said over and over, you're the jewel. And I'm not just saying it because you're on the phone. I mean, you're on the Zoom. The talent is in Mount Rainier. And so, and the timing is right. So so I'll stop there because I'm sure other people would like to talk. But and some of the people that you you mentioned, as far as your advisors, you know, I've worked with before. So I think it's going to be a great collaboration. So I'm very excited about the project. I'm also a lead green associate. So when you're talking about solar and bringing arts and environmental sustainability, I'm right there. I am right there.
I don't think I have to answer from Dylan though.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to. I'm happy to sort of talk to the financials of it. The essentially, the terms of my, there were three bidders on this and I had to sort of fight to get to be the person who actually managed to buy it. And they were not cheap, as everyone could probably imagine. I'm sure you've seen the transaction prices. But there's also a lot of capital investment that needs to happen from a roofing and all those sorts of stuff standpoint. The financing that came from the bank was contingent upon me raising rents to what I had I had sort of stayed as a target. Currently, these spaces are anywhere between $7 and about $9.5 per foot triple net. And the the target that we're going to move everybody to on the renewals is going to be $12 a foot triple net. That is not a, it is a raising, but it's not huge. I believe industrial space in this area can generally support $16 to $18 a foot. And I think that keeping it to $12 a foot, what I'm aiming to do for my grandfathering phase is my intention is to not get rid of any single artist that is back there. I like the space. I like a lot of the artists. I've gone around and talked to them. But to the to the utilization notion of the spaces, there are some people who have 2,800 square feet and they've got 1,000 square feet of studio and 2,000 square feet of storage. And when you look across the railroad tracks and extra space storage, extra space storage is $18 a foot. And so part of of getting the activity in the space is getting more artists back there and utilizing that. And to be, I don't want to be in the storage business. I would like to be in the facilitating of art with with studios. And so, you know, one of the one of the tenants you particularly mentioned has four units. Two of them are literally storage and they have 1985 Volkswagen's and wooden boats in there. I'm going to make it more expensive so that it doesn't make sense for them to store 1985 Volkswagen's in there. And that's kind of part of what I want to do. I do not want it. I do not want anyone to leave. And in fact, I want to bring more people back there. I own two other buildings that are in, that are both in Brentwood, actually. I own the former Giannetti Studios, which is across from the Juice Building. And I also own the Firehouse that's on Bladensburg Road across from the grocery store. And I have a waiting list for those units that are all at $12 a foot. So the deal that I'm trying to strike with the tenants that I have yet to present to them, so you're getting the preview of it. But basically, I want to give everybody five-year leases that lock in at $12 a foot with no accelerators. And so that while I'm asking them to pay a little bit more now, I'm not going to sort of have that 3%, 4%, 5% accelerator on an annual basis that most buildings have. And I'm going to do that for a minimum of five years so that everyone's maximum rent is $12 for at least five years and offer that to them. Anybody who wants to take shorter leases, they will probably go under the accelerator scale. But again, knowing that the accelerators are 4% or 5% in the market, I'm keeping that at about 2 and 3/4% just to make sure that. So if it goes from 12, it goes to 1230 and we're not at 13 before, you know, it'll, at that current scale, it would be 15 bucks by 2030, which I still think is both far below market. And as as the more development is coming to the area, is going to be the way to do it. My intention is never to sort of refinance these and over-leverage them because even when I go to $12 a foot, the equity will be in these where they allow me to do other stuff. But my banker thinks I grew up in the Great Depression because I'm so tight with my money and like to leave things and hate debt and all that sort of stuff. So part of financially stabilizing is getting is getting artists in there that are also selling and active artists. Because as great as it is to have hobbyists, there are artists whom I know personally who are selling mid-six figures per year and can't afford studio space in DC because they're at $35 a foot at 520 Street. Or the Montana Motor Inn, which is literally 3/4 of a mile away, is at $26 a foot. So those artists are beating down my door right now, knowing that I've got $12 a foot. And that both creates better utilization in the space, better talent in the space. It augments all those great people, the Ms. Dallas mentioned, and people whom I've really only met a few times but really like and like their spaces and love their art. But that is, that is sort of the plan. I want to bring more folks of that caliber back there so that that notion of a destination and people know like, this this person's studio is there and this person did a wall there and all those sorts of things. That anybody who knows these people come to DC have to come to this place because this is where everybody is. So, yeah, they, you know, No King's Collective has talked to me about spaces. Kelly Towles wants space, that artist named Mark Kellner, who just sold a half a million dollars a week at a show in New York. All these people want spaces for me. And so getting better utilization is kind of the way I'm putting that. But it's also still at 70% of what market can actually support. So that's generally how I'm approaching it.
Thank you, Dylan. So I have two councilmembers that I go open to the floor and we are running very close to time and we have the following presentation. So Luke, Jared, go ahead.
Mayor, do we need to add some time? I have a few questions.
This will fall right under, right, it'll be one after the other one presentation, so. Can we go ahead and add 10 minutes and then hard stop for the next part?
I'm moved to add 10 minutes to this agenda item.
Thank you so much, Luke. Any seconds?
Second.
No objections. So we're adding 10 minutes, Melissa. Five minutes in, send me a message so that way I know that they have five minutes, we have five minutes and we'll stop, okay? Thank you, Melissa. All right, Luke, go ahead. The first yours.
Thank you, Mayor. No, just want to say thank you so much for investing in Mount Rainier. I loved your can-do attitude, the ability to just say, "We're just going to do this." I love that you're just going to buy the orange thing that helps people climb up to the tops of buildings and paint things and do other stuff. Just really like that sort of attitude in projects and appreciate that. Pause on that screen, that picture, actually go back to that picture real quick with the green space there because that is one comment I have. Currently, there is a little sort of spring that runs from Langin's Building, sort of the wooded area in between Langin's Building and your property, that then cuts through and has an outlet right here where this grass space is. That is a wonderful habitat for turtles and snakes. And us on the green team in Mount Rainier have actually tagged this as a potential like sort of park space creepwalk area. So just want to put that in your mind. I don't know what you thought of that. And we've actually talked with, so Dave Epley helps with Tom Little in that community garden there. And Dave and And Dave and I have talked about doing a clean out and kind of creating that space and doing that. So the green team in Mount Rainier, which is a volunteer committee, has already just kind of targeted stuff for that area in consultation with the community garden. And I think at some point in time, I may have had a conversation with Langdon, although I can't, I think it was probably a couple of years ago, about the potential to sort of clean out that forest area. There's a lot of trash and debris back there. And make like a path along where that spring is coming out, which is a really cool project. So just so you know, stormwater management is a big issue in the city. All of us here on the mayor and council are very passionate about it, about creating ways for us to better manage our stormwater through things like rain gardens and bio retention. And the Dueling Creek watershed, which is the concrete pad that goes next to the skate park there. The Dueling Creek is under there, which is a historic creek. And this is sort of its watershed right here, the start of the Dueling Creek. And so the dream one day is to be able to daylight, take off that concrete slab and actually have a beautiful creek running through there. That is a vision that's far away. You'd have to involve the Army Corps of Engineers. They are not quite as green as maybe someone like the Army Corps of Engineers to be. So there's been some level setting of expectations, I'll use that term again, to us about the potential for a project there. But because of the inability to do that, there is the idea that we can do maybe some more day lighting of the sort of the spring that comes down and connects with Dueling Creek there. And obviously, that feeds into Northwest Branch and the Chesapeake Bay and all that good stuff. So just something to be very mindful of, something we'd love to work with you on. But I know you've slated that spot for building, so I don't know how that fits in with your plans. And then I have, let me, yeah, let me just get to my other thing and then you can talk. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the other thing that I've been working with the green team on, one of my dreams has been to have an Oktoberfest back in between all these buildings. So the parking space in between your two buildings, the green team and I have talked about doing an Oktoberfest in the fall of 2022 back there. So if there's a potential to partner with you on some sort of fest and the timing of that, we're very like, you know, flexible on because everybody's got work to do. So if you're looking at something that you want to activate that space and have an event and tell people what's going to go on back there, you know, we're willing to work with you on that because we were, there's somebody who works at DC Brow who lives in Mount Rainier and sort of we talked to them about it. So there's the idea of having a big Oktoberfest back there because who doesn't want to drink beer and look at art? So anyways, that's something else to consider and I will shut up because the mayor is telling me that I'm running out of time. Thanks.
Perfect. Dylan, you have something you were going to say?
Yeah, if I can just respond quickly, that green area, there is a, I know what you're talking about with the spring and that's actually where I was talking, that was the area where I've been talking to Langdon. That's where we were talking about running the arts walk back there along that. I think there's a great opportunity to put a sculpture garden and the community garden back on that parcel because it's nearly a full acre back there. But it would need a fair bit of groundwork to be able to do that. What we're looking at on screen, there is this kind of L-shaped piece of drainage where there is a drainage tile that comes from the right and drainage tile that goes out to the left to that covered area of the creek. And that is, it's a big flooding problem, actually. I've gotten a bunch of videos from the guys at the Glass School where that drainage tile backs up. And so the piece of grass that we're staring at is actually what I just purchased from a man named David Perote. And he had gotten approval to build a very ugly building that I did not want there out of shipping containers. And so I paid too much for this land because he'd done all the groundwork. But part of that included covering up a huge part of that drain, sort of ditch in the back. And I think as we look forward towards this, from a flood control standpoint, because I've also been aware that when that drainage tile by the stop sign backs up, the house across the street floods in the first floor and there's eight inches of water that runs down the street in parallel with the creek. So I've been aware of those things. I stopped David from building something that I did not think was terribly impressive. But I think the long-term solution may be to bury that whole drain over to where the creek is because right now it's just a garbage collection point. But I do not anticipate, you know, your vision for the creek and the spring and everything, I think, are very similar to what I was thinking. But I'm also two years away from even broaching the subject of building stuff. So I just know that that is a flood hazard right now for all the buildings and for one of the houses across the street. And I think my goal in the long term would be to stop the flood hazard, but Oktoberfest will do it.
Thank you so much. Guys, I'm going to be very close to time because you guys know I like to run my meetings efficiently with time. Jared, the floor is yours.
No, thanks. This is a really great presentation. Really excited about, you know, some of the enhancements you're bringing in terms of art and just all the pieces. So I won't spend time rehashing it. Just a quick question, what was the timing or timeline for this? Apologies if I missed it.
I'm starting the brick and stucco work basically as soon as it's warm enough to have guys working outside. It's also going to take me a few more weeks to actually buy the right cherry picker for it. I've got the planning going already for the solar, so that's going to be financed most likely through a C-PACE. And that has to be done in conjunction with several of the roofs. And several of the roofs require insulation and there's a national back order of six to eight months for the insulation. So we will likely be doing the roofs before the end of the year. But that is all sort of in process. The first priority is sort of getting everybody under new leases and extending new leases. Because five people, five units are on expired, five units are expiring in the next six months and then just sort of making sure we got everybody on paper because that's where that's going. So the walls have to be done before that. I'm anticipating between eight and 10 weeks for wall work and I've got guys working full-time doing that. And then once that happens, you know, we will start painting almost immediately after that.
Well, my goal is to have it all done before I leave. That's for sure. That's the real deadline.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Dylan.
You're welcome.
All right, Jared, that was your question, right? So I do have Judy who had a comment. Judy, the floor is yours.
All right. So I think Luke touched on a lot of my concerns and ideas. And the first thing, I want to say thank you. It's a great project. And I think it's a great thing to end your time in office, Denny. So it's a great thing that you're also putting so much interest in this. So, but it's beautiful. It's, I really applaud the effort. But I would like, you know, I know that there is a lot of green around it, but it would be nice to have some area where you can sit or something or there's some planters and you don't see so much cement. And that green area can be a beautiful bog garden, really deep, that will sink in a lot of water.
Thank you, Judy.
Huge, you know, a deep bog garden, like rain garden.
Perfect. Thank you, Judy. Dylan, you're taking notes, I see.
Yeah, I mean, those are conversations I'm having with Tom Little and that's small, that's small garden. It's not shown in the render, but it's currently there. It's currently about 800 square feet. I'm hoping he can take that to about 2,500 square feet. And then hopefully plant some of that empty grass with sort of native grasses and wildflowers in the near term, as we sort of, once like I said, get the whole property done and financially stabilized and then in 24 months, looking at what the expansion opportunities would be. So I'm right there with you on all that.
So thank you so much for some sitting area. Denny, do you want to have a few words before we close this part? Because I'm going to jump right into the next part for the skate park.
Dylan said it all. We're going to work with Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council. I'm keeping Angie Rogers abreast of what's going on since the beginning. And we are, this is going to be part of the budgetary negotiations.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your presentation, Dylan. We are so excited to have this. The other thing, out of full disclosure, I literally live on 37th Street. So that's like down the street from my property. I live across the street from the park. So I was looking, that's what I was like. I told Danny, we need to bring him into the meeting so that way we could hear. So the rest of the residents could hear. So, you know, we have a very great block of people that are very green, very artistic. So adding youth as part of like our neighborhood, I think is a good addition. So I look forward to seeing the whole entire corner transform, you know, and start reflecting who we are as Mount Rainier, a community of artists and visionaries. So I thank you for your presentation and for your time. And please reach out to Mayor Council and also to Mr. Kamali and Mr. Hopkins if you need any support or support in our end, okay?
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Melissa, keep the agenda on screen. And thank you for the various residents that are hanging on with us. I promise after this presentation, we'll move the agenda very fast along. But it's, everything's pretty tied together. Okay.
And so.
Go ahead, Denny.
So just keeping it moving. So we've had $75,000 in the CIP for years. And I mean that years, literally meant for Mount Rainier South Park. And I communicated that several times and nothing had been done. We were thinking that we would combine it with the skate park, but the mayor, we had a presentation, we chose C, to see maybe we could find additional money or we could figure out other monies that we bring to the table through the CIP process in the budgetary process to make the skate park as, you know, as Olympic, as we commented. So that could also be included in this budgetary cycle. But I want to give the floor to Park and Planning to literally discuss this money that is in the CIP. And now we could actually do something with the money. And hopefully, we could, I'd like to see something happen again before the deadline of 18.
Thank you, Denny, and thank you, Laura, for being here. I'm going to open up the floor to you. And just to be clear, this was before my time as mayor. When Denny brought it to my attention, I said, let's meet, let's move because I do not believe in having money sitting at the table that we could utilize specially to enhance our parks. So thank you for being here, Laura. The floor is yours. Go ahead. And if you're speaking, we cannot hear you. We are seeing your presentation moving.
I'm sorry. This is the first time on WebEx for me. I would like to, I would like to acknowledge and thank Denny Tavares, councilperson for District 2, Mayor Benitez, members of the City Council and the residents of the City of Mount Rainier for having Park and Planning here tonight. For the record, my name is Laura Honaly. I am a registered landscape architect and the Northern Area Planner for Prince George's County. I'm here tonight with Anya Hedgepath and we are representing the Prince George's County Department of Parks and Recreation. And we're here to talk about Mount Rainier South. Going through my presentation, I'm going to try to go fast. And of course, my cursor is not moving. Let me try this. Okay, so just, we did our introductions, a brief overview. We're going to do the site surrounding and we get kind of the inspiration and we will move to the discussion part of this. So, or. I don't know if you could see that little thing up there. For reference, the Mount Rainier Park that we are talking about is located on Otis Street and 37th Avenue. It's south of Rhode Island. And the buildings that were just presented are in this area right here, if you're not familiar with it. It won't advance. There it is. Okay. So in 2010, the skate spot or the skate park opened. Park and Planning invested $130,000 in it. It was built by American Ramp Company. We also contributed an additional $5,000 for landscaping signs and benches. I want to mention that this was kind of a watershed moment for the Department of Parks and Recreation and Maryland National Capital Park and Planning as a whole. This was our first attempt at a skate park, either in Montgomery or Prince George's County. And it was fairly epic to get risk management to move off-center and allow this type of recreation activity. You know, there was huge concerns about all types of injuries, all types of liabilities. And it took a great amount of convincing to allow Park and Planning to build, construct and operate a skate park. So this was our very first attempt. And in 2012, we went on and opened the Mount Rainier South Park Playground, which is located on top of the hill from the skate park. In 2021, we did about $11,000 of repair work to the skate park. And now we are looking at new ideas and new opportunities. If you're unfamiliar with the lay of the land, this is about 3/4 of an acre. There are three distinct parts of the park. There's the playground parcel, which is located on 37th. This is up higher than the actual skate spot, which is down here. And then there's open space over on this side. This is a view of the Mount Rainier South Mini Park. This kind of gives you an idea of what the playground equipment looks like. Again, it was put in about 2012. In addition to the play area, there is a little concrete pad up front here with a bench, a little sitting area, a little play area. And I think we could activate that space and make that a little nicer. This is what the skate spot looks like. You're probably all familiar with it. Opportunities, you know, people that I've talked to, the park has good ramps and some challenges. It's enjoyed by the people who use it. It's attended by all ages and genders. And every time we go there, it is used. Some of the challenges, of course, it's been there for 10 years. Some of the people are wanting new tricks, more challenges. They've mentioned we could use some picnic tables, maybe some benches, additional signs. Park and Planning has a policy that we scrub all graffiti in the park. For skateboarding, graffiti is kind of a culture and they would like to see it stay. When I talk to people that ride skateboards, some say the paint makes the concrete slicker and it makes it a little more challenging and they would prefer to see it go. And then I talk to those that say, you know, it's inspiring. And we put things on the ramps that mean like try harder and push for it, reach for it, you know, that it's energizing to the skater. So there's mixed emotion about graffiti. For us, it's just a non-issue. We take it off because we don't know what is motivating and what is enraging for some. So for some, the park can generate too much noise. And of course, one of the challenges is the park is also well utilized. We do program the park. This is an example of an event that took place earlier. This was live music board deck painting. A music festival was held there. There were tents all around the perimeter of the park. There were t-shirts for sale, food for sale, music, artists doing work on the boards, et cetera. And of course, there was great skating exhibits. This is a view of Otis Street, what it looks like today. I picked this off of Google Earth and you can see it's kind of industrial to the south and the east, the park, and then everything to the north and west is more residential oriented. This is what that area looks like today, where those murals are going to be. And again, this was picked off Google Earth, so I can't say this was exactly today. This was sometime previous and you could tell it's a little summery in the picture. Um again, Danny had talked about the inspiration for redoing the buildings was the Lindward walls. This was the part of the presentation that I was gonna turn this over to Danny, but um Mr. French has already given us a nice overview of this. So I want to keep advancing in the interest of time and I wanna move to improvements and discussion. Um we want to talk about uh the the park itself and I'll go back to the pictures. We do have in our budget seventy-five thousand dollars from this exhibit. You can see that it was put in in two thousand eighteen. And um the money has been sitting there waiting for a little more specific direction. Should we use it at the playground area? Should we use it on the skate park? Should we do something a little different with it? Should we do art? Should we do interpretation? So we are trying to define that today and I opened the floor to your discussion um on how best to use the seventy-five thousand.
Thank you so much. Um so Danny, do you wanna add anything right now before I open as far as the presentation? Danny?
Uh yeah, I'm here. Uh no, not really. I think that you you can um. I think you should dictate uh how you wanna use the money. Um cuz that money was meant for you all. And if we need to find money for other stuff, we'll go find new money. So I mean, at in in the meantime, you know, you do what you see fit. That's that's what the money was there for.
Perfect. I think that some of the information that came forward was if there was an upgrade when it came to our murals also in the skate park. To be able to tie it together with the murals we just saw, so that we could bring life um to the whole entire um space as well. Or even like split some of the money between the skate park and some to the playground. We do have, we do have the Green Committee here. So I'll gonna open up to Council. Uh hey, Danny, you have something else to add? I'm opening up to Council and then to the residents.
I don't know if I might uh according to what Laura said, that they don't allow certain, you know, things that might. You we we may require maybe a policy change. I know that we were doing, we were considering with the, I think we have seven hundred thousand dollars set aside for some other stuff. And we were considering doing um art, public art in the basketball courts. So I don't know if we could imply that same policy in the use of the skate park. But uh we would need to talk with uh Parks and Rec.
So Park and Planning will allow art murals in the park. Um we have at another skate park in the southern area, some boards set up. That are specifically allowed to have graffiti on it. If skaters wanna put graffiti, they're allowed to do it at, let me see if I can find that here. This is a skate park in the south and you can see we put up these boards. And you're allowed to graffiti art, anything you want on here. And we paint over it and the artists come out and they repaint it. So from time to time through the year, it gets erased and new art appears. So we can do something like this at the park and allow them to do it. And generally, the graffiti is um pretty easygoing. It's not insightful. There have been times where we've had to go down there and paint it that, you know. Depending on what's going on in the news and whatever, um it can get out of hand. So just to let you be full disclosure.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I think that in this neighborhood, I would wanna shy away from the graffiti piece. But I would wanna do maybe a little bit more artistic.
More urban murals.
Yeah, like other, like maybe I I'm more, I'm I'm more leaning on the mural piece, but again.
All right.
So I gotta learn to let go. Okay.
Let let me um let me open up the the floor to the council, uh so if they have any questions, any feedback. Uh Jared, um go ahead. The floor is yours.
Uh no, just wanted to thank you come for coming in and um going over this. I have no additional feedback at this time, but thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Jimmy followed by Luke.
Uh just a um little history that that actually skateboard park was a, used to be a basketball court. That you know, it was a lot of uh drunk traffic, other traffic, and it was actually abandoned for many years. And actually, Margaret Boozer and myself actually pushed the county to do uh the skateboard park there. So uh in two thousand seven, we had a lot of community involvement. But the the one uh thing in terms of is of the three lots, the the, and this is the mayor's backyard, so I don't wanna step on her. But the uh area uh right next below where Fred lives, right? You know, uh corner of Otis and uh Thirty-seventh seems to me not not very pleasant looking, underutilized. Uh I don't know if there's any thought about what could be done there because that's always like uh, it's like a nothing space and.
You're talking about these two lots right here.
That's correct.
Okay.
And there's a lot, there's a concrete thing there and it's like a very, it's not very attractive for the whole uh neighborhood. And and any kind of, you know, kind of uh ability to make that more attractive. I think especially given what's going on across the street would be helpful, but the mayor sees that all the time. So she probably, you know, I defer to her judgment on that.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy, followed by Luke. Krista, you have the floor right after Sarah. Uh go go ahead. Uh Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Um just a few years ago, the Green Team and Sarah, and we'll touch more on this. Um and volunteer residents planted a lot of na- native plants at those two two lots that we were just talking about there. Yeah, exactly, those two. Um so whenever we work, we would do there. We would wanna preserve that native planting. So one suggestion, you know, I have off the top of my head and and same thing as Jimmy, this is the mayor's backyard, so she's gonna have a better perspective. And Krista lives right there as well, so she'll even have a better perspective. Um but perhaps there could be a nature play area back there um on the, if you if you go visit our community food forest. Um that MNCPC sort of let us have control and 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 work on um with their approval, obviously. Um we we were able to to um sort of strategically place um some logs from an old chopped on oak there. And it has turned into quite the play area. Kids love it. And it's just a bunch of old oak logs sitting around in a pattern that residents just kind of put together and and came up with. Oh, sorry, my video is off. Um so um, you know, that could be a potential area, so that that sort of nature play area. Um um for that, those two um um P parcels right there, maybe that would fit in good. With the fact that there are already trees and bushes in there, so they can sort of activate a space, a place for for kids to play. Um and 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 something like that. So that's just an ideal idea I'll throw out there. And then with respect to the um the Thirty-seventh Street Park, I know there's that concrete pad there um um in the middle. And and I just, it's always kind of flummox me why that was there and it just kind of wasn't there. So either um, you know, figure out what to do with that, whether that could be a place that has shade and 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 people could sit at. Um or um or just kind of dig it up because it's it's sort of concrete and do something better um with with that whole space. Thank you.
Thank you for the input. I've always been perplexed at what that is too. I was curious if it was not maybe a house there. And the house came down and the pad stayed.
Yeah, it's it's utilized more for like when the kids wanna play or like chalk draw or like practice their baseball swing. Um but I do have, I'm gonna um, we draw my comments for right now. I do have members of the Green Team as well as the residents of Thirty-seventh Street that are here on the lines, so I wanna make sure they have a saying. So like I told you guys in the meetings, I, you know, I live literally in front of it. However, I don't speak on behalf of all the neighbors because I need to make sure they they have their piece on it because um we are very close collective. Uh um so I do have a Sarah from the Green Team. Sarah followed by uh Krista. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um no, I just wanted to to know, and Luke mentioned it as as well, that um in both the uh Mount Rainier South Park open open space. And in the playground area, uh neighbors in the Green Team have been planting and maintaining some native plantings. And would love to see those maintained. I've got some nice little temporary signs, particularly in the the playground area. Um it's been a really nice um project with the neighbors. Um in the open space, the kind of triangle that uh Jimmy was discussing, we do have some native trees there. Um some small poppows and a couple of others as well. But something that would be useful there would be some help with the invasives. Um there's a lot of multiflora rose and other invasives. We work to cut it out every year, but of course, it's very difficult to eliminate entirely. And in terms of making it into a play space for children, um I think that's a great idea, but there's a lot of poison ivy. So just some help mitigating those uh overgrowths would be really helpful, I think. That's it for me.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh Laura, you heard uh Brian Tunny heard the feedback? I don't hear them, but we'll make sure that that is so. Definitely thank you, Green Team and Thirty-seventh Street Neighbors. Cuz it definitely adds a lot of um, a lot of native planning and education also for the kids in that in those corners. All right, Krista, the floor is yours, followed by Lee.
Hi, um I was just um going to be putting in my voice for shade, the canvas shade. We don't really, we've got a lot of trees around there, but none of them are really actually providing shade um in the heat of the summer. Um and I, somebody mentioned putting shade over the cement pad, but if we had to choose one over the other. Some um the shade over the actual playground equipment would be really, really nice. It would make the playground actually usable during um the summer. Usually, um especially when the kiddos were little, we'd have to go all the way over to the um Brentwood Park over by the police station or town hall or whatever it was. Cuz they actually had shade over there. So that would make a big difference for us over here.
Thank you, Krista. Uh Lee, you have the mic?
I agree with everything that Krista said. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lee. So I'll tell you guys, I'm in full agreement with them. I I have a daughter and during the summer hours. Um you cannot utilize the park cuz it gets so hot. See, only lose it like in the in the late evenings when the when the heat has gone away. So it feel like, uh definitely feels like a a waste of wonderful resource to the to the block. And this is the only park we have um in the south side of Mount Rainier and Brentwood. Cuz um they don't have a park on the south side of Brentwood as well, so it's well utilized um. And that big chunk of the day that is not being used, it it definitely affects. So if there's um any way to like look into shading for that space, it'll be great. Um so the mayor that's in the bottom of the playground, uh that still needs uh some work uh to be done. Uh because there are a couple holes here, there still needs to be upgraded. Um and that is like we'd be very good at calling it and you guys ask for it to like uh make the fix that we needed. Uh when it's like they grown up the um, they went around the playground, the grass and stuff like that, um but it hasn't been up kept. So uh Laura, see you here. Um is anybody else in the public who wishes to speak that's here? Type your name on the on the chat and and we'll call upon you. So uh Laura, you heard a little bit of the uh feedback when it came to the shade, um the greenscape and um, yeah, something like that. Like but it a hundred percent the top of the structure, not necessarily the benches, correct? So go ahead, Laura. The floor is yours.
So I prepared this slide because I anticipated that there would be shade. I spoke with our landscape architecture team and they are very supportive of putting shade um over our playground structures. It's absolutely possible. The next steps would be to call the playground representative. The representative from Game Time that installed the play equipment, have them come out. They need to assess the situation and we need to make sure these are really tall poles and the puddings that go in are pretty substantial. So we need to make sure we have room on the backside of that playground for this large post. I think the rest of the posts like these, we would not have any difficulty. But this main one is a concern and we might not have space, that we might have to look at something a little different. So um for us, the next steps, if you guys are very interested in shade, um I do have a slide with next steps. We're gonna um take all the community input. We're gonna assess the existing conditions at the playground. And I didn't put on here the skate park, but we are going to assess the existing conditions of the skate park. We're gonna meet on site with the playground representative and see if there are any obstructions, any problems with putting shade in. We will develop costs and we will provide input back to the community on our findings. And we would like to come back maybe to this forum in the next month and have a very, very brief discussion um on our findings. So uh we can decide on the improvements that we're gonna do, maybe in March, present back to the community, March or April. Um if it's acceptable to the community what our path forward is, we would look at um trying to do the designs and the permitting over the summer. And then as Danny said, you know, she's interested in having something before she leaves office. So we would be prepared with a late summer, early fall um opening. And you know, this is a little aggressive depending on what we pick. But the that the community has requested or anticipated tonight and um talking. It seems like, it seems like we may be able to uh deliver. Um certainly, projects with removing poison ivy, addressing invasives. Um looking at screening, maintaining native plants. Maybe we could put up some signage around that area that says the Green Team developed this native plant garden for the community. List out a number of plants that were put there or develop a really mini arboretum and put some tags on those plants. So people can see what the natives are.
That's wonderful. The other thing is like I know um a few months back, we were having conversations also um. Uh to install the program adopt a park, uh because the Thirty-seventh Street neighbors have been keeping up um with the park as long along with the Green Team. So um told that a site could be put on and that way they recognize for um their their efforts as well. So seeing that information, I definitely would like to to make sure that that's also um added.
Can't quite hear you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
That that well.
You know, it's interesting that I even have the phone on a holder. Okay. Okay, can you hear me now?
You're not as clear as you have been earlier.
Oh, interesting enough, I have the phone, but WebEx has it against me, so this will be like three strikes for the meeting. Uh can you guys hear me at all?
A little.
Okay, so I I was mentioning that of the four, I know um there was a district in doing this, so I'll communicate with you to make sure um. We could be directed into also working that. And it feels very much as if. I'm like basically like almost standing at one leg holding like uh rabbit ears, equivalent of it right now. But it feels very much that, you know, I think the shade is like top priority for the neighbors. And then the rest of the seven seventy-five thousand dollars could definitely be used when it comes to the mural and the upgrades um of the skate park.
Okay, so after we leave this meeting, we will get the playground representative to the park. We will make an assessment of determination and um get some cost estimates together. And bring our findings back to this community. Um if there's some type of fatal flaw, we are gonna have to look at different shade. And so I do want to emphasize, this is conceptual. This anticipated timeline is conceptual until we have hard facts and hard assessment from our.
Perfect. Uh that works, Laura. We'll send you the invite. We're here the first and third Tuesday of the month. And you're definitely welcome to come back on either of those meetings, okay?
Okay, well, let's set it up for the third Tuesday in um March. If I have something sooner, I will let you know and be back sooner.
All right, perfect. Melissa, make sure we follow up through uh with them as well. Okay, uh thank you neighbors for staying up late as well. Thank you council as well. Um any other questions and anything else to add on this point? I see nothing, so.
Thank you for inviting us, thank you for having us.
Thank you for bringing your partners and um for, for moving this uh festival on. Any, thank you so much as well for making sure the seventy-five thousand dollars um are, I did not let go of um the fact that we need to do some work. So I think there's potential uh for the next meeting to review uh if there's additional funding to make sure we could put some also on the, on the park title together. Okay? All right, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Danny, thank you. And good night, uh Brent Tunny as well.
Good night.
Good night, neighbors.
Thank you, neighbors.
You're happy to stay for the rest of it. I know it's, everything's so exciting uh on it. So we're moving on to item number seven, presentation of the city compost proposal. We have uh Mr. Tim Jenkins and the green team that will present a proposal to Maryland Council to a pilot of a small city composting program to be open to thirty residents on a voluntary basis at a cost of um three thousand dollars. So green team, um Tim or Sarah, um the floor is yours.
Hey, Tim, I think you're on mute. I can see you talking, but I can't hear you.
Off to a great start. Um hi, my name is Tim Jenkins, uh and I've come up with this proposal for a um, a composting system here in Mount Rainier. I'd like to actually share my screen with the uh PowerPoint presentation, unless uh somebody has that queued up as well.
We're seeing something on screen, Tim. I don't know if that's what you're referring to, but it's, it's a lot of writing and two documents.
That's my, that's my proposal, but I also made a presentation. Um how about I share?
I think they, I think Melissa just gave you the right to share.
There we go. Can you guys see it okay?
Yes.
Brilliant, all right. Okay, so um I'm not sure what I said already, but uh my name is Tim. I'm a member of the green team and I've come up with this idea for a localized composting system. Uh I'd like this to be a continuing program of Mount Rainier. And I would, uh basically I just first want to cover with you, um you know, what is composting and why I think it's so great. So compost, it's taking uh food scraps from people's households and processing it with leaf waste and wood chips from the uh uh public works and combining it, taking those waste streams and turning it into a beneficial resource that we can use right here in town. Why do we want to do this? Well, first of all, it costs the city money to take our food waste, our, the ends and bits that come out of our kitchen when we're chopping our vegetables. Uh we throw in the trash can, it goes in the trash, um trash can outside and we take it to a landfill. Right now, the Prince George County landfill is upping its tipping fees to seventy-nine dollars per ton. So it co, it costs us money to do that. I want to take that organic material, that food scraps, uh out of the waste stream for a landfill and process it locally. When it goes to the landfill, it produces methane. Methane is a greenhouse gas and we all know how that is affecting climate change and making all of our lives much more difficult. Making compost actually sequesters carbon. Not only that, compost works like a sponge. It absorbs carbon, but it also absorbs water. Uh so we can incorporate that into things like rain gardens. We can also use it as a resource to provide nutrients to uh the soil of gardening projects. Um we have a great community of home gardeners in Mount Rainier and we have a community garden. All those can use this resource and it will absorb water wherever it is in, in this area. So why do it locally? Uh there's, there are lots of people doing composting. Uh Prince George County has amazing composting program um that is done in a facility in Upper Marlboro. Um there's compost gap, compost crew, they've got uh great things going on, taking it away to um other facilities to have processed. That produces carbon dioxide uh when fuel is burned. So burning fossil fuels, picking up household waste, no bueno. We, I would like to do it locally, so we don't have to pay the extra expense of vehicles. When it's produced locally, it's used locally and it's gonna bring people together. This project I'm proposing is going to use um some volunteer labor, but it's also going to help be a, a connector to bring um different residents uh together in a collaborative fashion. So how are we gonna do this? Um I have all these great ideas and I quickly realized it is way bigger than me. So I'd like to introduce to you, O Scrap. It's the newest uh composting startup in the uh DMV area. And I am now a member.
We need some pizza. You already left?
Me too. Um so uh I'm a member of this uh small company. I recently got my uh composting um compost facility operator certification from the um uh Maryland Department of Agriculture. We've got uh people from the EPA uh working on this uh company, as well as people who've worked with Veterans Compost. So it's a uh community focused composting startup. Uh it's located right here and um we really want to keep food scraps out of the landfill, working with local farms, uh restaurants, small businesses, gardens. And um we want to facilitate um communities, especially municipalities, to uh reduce their waste, saving them money, all the environmental benefits I've already said, and bring that nutrient back into uh local soils. So. How are we gonna do this? Uh we're not going to reinvent the wheel here. Uh we want to use the compost knocks three bin system. You might have seen this already, uh if you've been in uh the Mount Rainier Community Garden. Um it's used extensively in uh Washington DC with their uh Parks Department has a compost co-op program. They use this design. I just went and talked to um the compost co-op in Greenbelt this morning. They use the same design as well. It's great, here's why. It's very modular. Each of these uh segments can be built um in a workshop, like my workshop and assembled elsewhere. Um it can be expanded, it can be uh reduced, it can be, it can change its shape. It can be L-shaped, it can be T-shaped, whatever you want, whatever your space requires. I want to use for this pilot, you can do composting just as a pile. It doesn't take a lot of money to make um some garbage rot. Um but I want to use um high quality lumber for the pilot so that it looks nice because we're doing it close to, in a close proximity to residents. It is designed to keep rodents out. Uh I believe you can see my mouse here. Uh it is using um hardware cloth, which is uh like not window screening, but the heavy duty screening uh to keep rodents out. It is elevated off the ground. Uh there will be um pavers used on the bottom to keep, keep it elevated. Uh I'm thinking even more than what's displayed in these pictures, uh more like six to eight inches off the ground. So where do I want to do this? Right behind the Mount Rainier Bike Co-op. Uh this is on Bucker Hill Road, um adjacent to the parking lot of the fire station. You can see here, they've got a lovely uh awning and the uh grain bin, uh the corn bin for the uh program behind it. And I want to use this um grassy space right here. Uh I also note that um that parking lot is to the left, on the left side of the tree. And so it has pretty good vehicle access for public works to dump leaves and wood chips nearby. And people can walk right back here. It's uh visible enough, but also kind of out of the way. Here's a uh rough rendering of uh what I'm talking about here. So it's gonna be a bin about this, about like this, a mixing platform in front of it. Uh we shouldn't have to uh cut any of these um lovely juniper trees there. It'll be set back uh about a meter or so uh from the fence where the neighbor is. And um this won't require any permanent structure or um construction. Not even, uh there'll be a, a little bit of leveling, but really trying to achieve that just by, rather than digging, raising up with uh pavers where it's needed. So it can be picked up, it can be moved, uh really no actual breaking of ground involved. Here's a quick um rendering of uh what I'm talking about here. It's with those three bins, it's gonna be twelve feet long, it's gonna be four feet tall, four feet deep. A mixing platform in front and a, what I'm talking about there is basically a big plywood board with um a little uh barrier around it, so that as things dump out of the composter, you can then kind of use a shovel to scrape, scoop, mix um the different materials. Uh it keeps it from getting muddy. We're gonna have excellent signage, telling people what it is, uh what participants need to do. Um and also a scale uh hanging here so that we can collect very good data about uh what's coming in, uh how much is being processed and how much compost is resulting uh in the final. As this is just a pilot program, uh we're going to then report all those findings to the town. And I mentioned before, those tipping fees for sending garbage to the landfill. We're going to have a rough calculation of how much waste did not go to a landfill in the process of doing this. And potentially, we might be able to say, we saved the town money. We can all dream. So, and in the bottom right corner, a bucket drop off area. Let me tell you a build about how this is gonna work. Um we are going to, we're looking for thirty household participants, um up to forty. Uh but I think thirty is a, a good place for us to start with. The dimensions of this bin I mentioned, but the capacity is uh seven point one one cubic yards of volume. So with, based on approximates of how much a household uh produces waste wise, we're looking at about thirty participants, maybe a little more. Everybody is going to get a five gallon bucket. It's gonna have the scrap brand on it, it's gonna look real great, it's going to be sealable. Uh those will go to households, they'll fill it up at their own pace. And when they are ready, they'll just drop it off and there'll be a clean bucket waiting for them. We really want to go for ease of use. This is not a household pickup um project. We don't have the logistics to do that. So we want to make things as easy as we can on the user, on the participant end. So um they're gonna leave it. And then, once we have enough to make a full uh bins worth of uh scraps to make a composting blend, we're going to mix that with leaves, blend it up, chop it up, uh make a recipe based on um the, you know, carbon nitrogen ratios, moisture ratios, et cetera, depending on the material, all the things I learned during my certification, and we're gonna make a big uh blend. So timeline, real quick. Uh construction, setup, outreach and recruitment, this is all things O Scrap is going to do. Get the people online to uh do this uh project, educate them on what needs to be done on their end. We're going to need some volunteer participation on this. And um let them know, you know, what goes in, what does not go into a um, a composting bin. Uh generously, approximately two months after approval. I'd like this to be a one-year uh pilot program. So it's going to receive the um waste in buckets, make the compost blend. About two to three months per batch uh will be processed. And then we distribute that compost to the different parties that are interested, the rain gardens, uh home gardeners, community garden, et cetera. Collecting data throughout and then we report that data to find out how this all resulted. Uh O Scrap can do all these things. Uh we're, uh we have a great team of experienced people that who can do this. So we've got construction, community outreach, uh recruitment, education, maintaining it. So meaning uh sending a technician out there about once a week to take temperatures, do monitoring, um turn the pile if needed, water, collect data and report. Here is an example of um the type of material that O Scrap can provide. Uh we have an excellent graphic designer on, on staff. Um so this is just our quick guide to what, what goes in and what does not go into a compost pile. The number um I initially cited for you uh was three thousand dollars. There's a few things I um left out. This is a um, an evolving uh project, but things like, I forgot to add, you know, padlocks need to be part of this. Uh in the word document, um I itemized every single nut, bolt, screw, board, everything. Uh but there's a few things that I left out, so I will add those as we go. Um uh you know, we, we need a wheelbarrow, uh we need a, a trommel sifter. Um so this is evolving. Um the Bike Co-op is very enthusiastic about this. They'll even help out making some of these um gadgets. And so we're, we're gonna ask for about closer to four thousand. Um again, not a ton of money and the idea is hopefully we'll save the town money in the long run. After we uh do the year, the report after a year, hopefully we can expand. Um this is just one bin, uh Greenbelt has several. Uh there could be one, you know, next to uh the skate park. Um New Brooklyn Farms, another site, uh Community Garden and our um food forest to make a uh, a very distributed system rather than uh having it um sort of done in an intensive way. We want a extensive uh way with a lot of community participation. So thank you so much for your time, um sticking it out for the late night session, guys. Does anyone have any questions? I will share my email and contact and stop uh sharing.
Thank you, Tim. Uh I'm gonna open up the floor to council. Please be aware that we have five minutes at this line item. So Luke, the floor is yours.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um this has just been a project that has gone um with the, with the green team for a long time. There's been a lot of iterations. Last year, if you remember, Mayor, we looked at how the city could do this um and the cost was just really high. Um staff doesn't really have the time to create another sort of composting pickup where we could pick up compost out front and deliver it to the Prince George's County composting facility. Um so it would include either having to buy more staff, um as well as buying a truck that could sort of handle the composting um capacity that, that they would have to. Um so the green team sort of went back. Tim joined the green team more recently and has really taken this on, so just thank you, Tim, so much. So this sort of pilot project seems, at least from the green team's perspective, and I'll leave it to Sarah if she wants to add more, is sort of like a right size for right now. It doesn't cost us a lot, it's just three thousand dollars. Um it would allow us to pilot something, see how it works and potentially um do this elsewhere throughout town. Thanks.
Thank you, Luke. Uh Jimmy and then Jared?
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Um so we have like our own little composting bin. Would we be a, actually taking stuff there instead? How would that work?
So if you're already doing home composting, that's great and that's kind of already mission accomplished for keeping the, that scraps out of the landfill. Really what I'd like to do is get the people who don't compost at home and people who can't compost at home. So we want to very actually intentionally seek out people who live in apartment buildings and network with those landlords. Um so that um people who are um, you know, less, less tuned into how great composting is to start participating in this and basically it'll be done mostly for them.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, no, thank you, Tim. Really appreciate you coming in and um, and this.
And this, I, I'm really impressed and, you know, as Luke mentioned, it kind of solves this, solves this challenge of, you know, how do you, how do you get a compost program going within the city? You know, relative to our staffing and vehicle availability. So I won't add too much more, it's already been said, but I thank you so much for your work and your dedication on this. It's really fantastic.
Thank you.
Perfect. So let me get this information correct. It is a one-year program, correct?
Yeah, for the pilot.
The other thing is like, can you guys discuss how people could sign up and how residents be selected?
Sure. You know, basically, we would like 30, that's the number we're shooting for. If, you know, if we have too many people who are interested, well, that's, those are the problems to have. Basically, we wanna use kind of all the means at our disposal to recruit people. So that's Facebook, the listserv, even flyers. So we'll produce kind of promotional material for that. And how to select, really, anyone who wants to participate and kind of gets it can. We will make our material bilingual in English and Spanish. We are a Latin-owned company. So I believe we all speak Spanish. I'm the only one who doesn't speak Spanish as a native speaker. So, you know, we want to be at, make our outreach as inclusive as possible. So, yeah. Anyone who wants to participate can, as long as they're willing to do so. We want people to volunteer at some of their time, but that is not, you know, contingent. If people just wanna drop the bucket off, that's great.
Perfect. Sarah, you have a few things to, to, to add?
Yeah, just a few things. Again, this is Sarah, let's see, the chair of the, of the green team. Back in 2021, when we were originally thinking of proposing a curbside pickup program, we did, we did a little community survey about composting. And there were more than 100 people who were interested in composting pickup. Now, not all of those are probably gonna be interested in a drop-off composting, but it does show that there are households that are interested in composting, but perhaps just not in their backyard. It's not everyone kind of combinator or wants it to be in their backyard. So I, I do think that we have those 30 households easily in Mount Rainier for this pilot project. The other thing is that the three bin system, if you haven't seen the one at the Community Garden, you should go check it out, see what it looks like. They are very sturdy. The one in the Community Garden had a tree fall on it and two of the bins are still standing and working just fine. So they're pretty hardy pieces of construction and they, they do seem pretty vermin-proof, which I know is very important. That's really all I wanted to add. Thank you.
So I do have Krista on the chat, she asked, how do they sign up? When will you guys are aiming at, once we approve the funding? When you, you guys are gonna have an application process? And I'm assuming the green team email address attached to it, correct? That might be a question for you, Sarah.
Yeah, we would definitely work with, with Tim and OScrap to get out the word for how to sign up. And I don't know if OScrap has got a, an application already, but if not, we would work on developing that with them and put that out to the community.
Yeah, we'll make a, a pretty streamlined application form that's simple to use. And, you know, basically we wanna make it all very user-friendly. And, you know, my email is in the chat here, so if you have any more questions that the public has, they can go ahead and email me at timjimjenkins@gmail.com.
Perfect. So Krista, we are, we are gonna be supporting as a city, putting all the information out when it's time to sign up. And feel free to join. The other thing I was gonna ask regarding the cost, you said it might go up $1,000. Is there any consideration of potentially even putting a minimal fee, even if it's a $5 for the 30 households that are gonna be doing this? Or is it more run to volunteer time? Is that what like, you know, cause I wanna make sure whoever, definitely the document shows that they're committed for the full year. That way you could collect data, I don't want them to sign up and, because, you know, what do they call it? They have no skin in the game, right? They could be like, oh, halfway through it, we're done. And that, that possibility could have been taken away from somebody that would like to, that would like to add or your data's gonna be completely off if you have X amount of people withdrawing halfway through the process.
Right. That's, that's exactly the conversation I've had with the rest of the team about what the right approach to that is. You know, we will be issuing them a bucket. And, you know, we want that bucket back. So, you know, I think a small fee is reasonable, as well as, you know, donating their time. Whether we do it, you pay some and you don't volunteer, or you don't pay anything, or you do volunteer, that's all something we can kind of hammer down to find out what feels right. I want to make the barrier to entry very low for the pilot. But we also want, we want people who really want to participate in this for an entire year, if not longer.
Yeah, at least to be able to replace the bucket, you know, at, at the minimum. All right, perfect. Community members, do you have any questions? Let me know so I could call upon you. Krista, do your question got answered? If now you, you have the floor.
If you're speaking. Sorry, I was scrolling through my phone trying to find you again. It did, thank you very much.
Go ahead. All right, perfect. So let me see if they got it answered, okay? Sarah and Tim, thank you so much, as long, as well as the rest of the green team, for always finding ways for us to, you know, remain green and, and help our community. And hopefully we have outstanding data and we can figure out how it could be done for the rest of the city at a reasonable cost, especially if it shows that we're able to save more and we'll be able to offset some of the costs that we're saving from recycling. And if we have not enough trash going to the minefield, then those resources could be utilized for definitely this, you know. So, so we balance it out a little bit. All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to the next item, item number eight, ARPA discussion and update. Council will go as fast or as you possibly can if there's any updates on any of these items. If it's just meaning like it's gonna go for vote on the next session, then we'll do that. It is 10:10, so I'm doing a time check. And we're, we're, we're more than halfway through the agenda, okay? All right. Luke, can you take over the ARPA discussion, please?
Sure. And just to make it quick, Mayor, you know, I, I don't have any updates for tonight since our discussion at the legislative session, I don't know if anyone else has any updates. But if, if, if folks don't have any updates, we might just be able to say there are no updates for residents. But I'll leave that up to you, Mayor.
Perfect. At least I will tell you, I'm gonna move three items for the voting. I know we kind of like semi-agree on it in the last session. But it'll be the scholarship funds, the repairs to the Miles Building. And there was, oh, there was one more. And the food.
Food security.
The food security item. So those will be the three that I'll be moving forward to voting for the March 1st agenda. Okay? Jimmy and Jared, go ahead. The floor's yours.
No comment.
All right.
No comment.
All right, perfect. So we'll have like a more in-depth update on the March 1st legislative session. Okay? Community members, anything? Nothing. All right, perfect. Moving on to number nine, Pots Hall update. The city will give an update on the financial options of Pots Hall to Mayor and Council. Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours. And thank you, Thomas, for being here and for all the feedback you have been receiving. As the screen goes off for Mr. Kamali, I definitely wanna remind the, the small businesses at the ARPA Money grant application for behalf of City of Mount Rainier is already active. We have received a couple businesses that already have dropped off the application. So if you need that information, Mr. Kamali will be, our city manager will be the one to reach out. And that's who you turn your complete package to. Okay? All right, go ahead, Mr. Kamali. The floor's yours.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. If we recall, last time I was trying to get some information for, from DHCD and see what options we have with them. So finally, they send us some information, which you see it on the screen. So if we go for 4 million, they will give us a 30-year option with 2.95 in a percent rate of interest. And the payment is gonna be 100K every six months, a total of $200,000 per year. And this is a 30-year loan. Is there any question regarding that? Then I can.
Keep, keep going, Mr. Kamali. Then like at the end, you could ask whatever question there is.
All right. So also, Council member Luke Cheswick was asking for the loans and the debts that we have in the book. So after my research, I found two loans, which right now you see it on the screen. For, the balance for this one is $380,000 as of December 21. And the loan is gonna be ended by December 24. And then we have another loan that was for 1.5, 1.5 million dollars. And the next one, we have the balance as December 4th is $274,000. So the total for both is gonna be 600K as of today. These are the outstanding balances that we have. And also, we are working with the Maryland Department of General Services to get the reimbursement that we supposed to get two years ago. Roceo, the Director of Public Works, is in close communication with them and they need a copy of council checks. So we're trying to get the copy of the council checks from the SunTrust Bank. Unfortunately, we don't have it in the city, so that's why it's taking some time. Hopefully, if we could get this information, the reimbursement is being approved by General Services. So we just have to send the information and hopefully we can get the money that we spent two years ago. And that's regarding the status of the Pots Hall. And you know that we renewed the license, so we have two years from now. And it's up to Mayor and Council, what would be the next, you know, direction. That's all I have. And if, if you guys have any question, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Council, I think I heard Jimmy or Jimmy, Luke, Jared?
Just one quick question. Do you know what this $600,000 in loans, what they're for? $350,000?
Yeah, I can, okay, Melissa, can you share one by one? The loans were taken from the bank in December 4, 2008. That's the first one for 1.25. And the other one, okay, if you go to the next one.
They know what it was.
They were for the funeral home in Bass Liquors.
No, I was not, yeah, at that time.
And we didn't pay that off when we got, when we bought the, when we sell the properties?
No.
No.
Hey, guys, one at a time. So Mr. Kamali, can you let us know what are the, the numbers for each of those? Cause I think there was three of them. So I think I heard Luke said the funeral home and the Bass property and.
The second one, we have another loan that, that was taken place in January 27, 2010. And the current balance, Melissa, can you go to the next, next page, please? Can you go down all the way down? No, you went too fast. All right, that loan, as of December the 30th, the last payment that I paid, $68,000. The balance we have, 381,000. And the other one, it was 222,000 as December last year.
But I think, yeah, the Bass, Bass and the Funeral Home, those were the loans for Jimmy. At least that's my understanding, Mr. Kamali, is that correct?
Yeah, well, I believe so because that happened a long time ago. And I believe that was for the funeral home.
Okay. So Jimmy, that, that is, to answer your question?
Yeah.
Perfect. Luke and Jared?
Yeah, there may have also been some consolidating of loans, Jimmy, that, that, that went along with the funding for the new police station that, that happened at some point. So those loans might have been consolidations from old loans as well. So in the heart, I, I just remember Brian and the mayor sharing, just sharing all that. And then, so there are, Mr. Kamali, what, what was the estimated cost of, of the Pots Hall construction? Was it a 4 million estimate, but because of, because that estimate was old, was it?
Exactly. Well, actually it was 3.5, 3.5 million dollars. Last time we talked to Howard. And there could be some increase, you know, due to the market right now we have.
Could be four now.
Three years ago, that was estimated.
Okay, so it could be four now, I see.
Exactly.
I think they were thinking more like five, six, Luke, more than just four.
I think I threw out six and they said, no, probably not that high. So maybe like between the four and five, yeah, maybe.
Four and five million dollars easily, you know.
Yeah. So the $4 million loan would assume that we would spend 1 million of our own money. So just for the rest of the mayor and council, when you looked at those loan payments that we have left, there are two that are gonna be paid out in June that we, that's, that's already budgeted for in the FY22 budget and those will happen on June. So when we look at those figures and Mr. Kamali said there's 600,000 left, well, after June, so come June 30th, there will only be about 400 and change, whatever 600 minus 60 minus 48 would be. So probably somewhere between 450 and 500 would be left come July 1. So if we think about this as what, you know, so, so, so put that in the side of your mind, that to pay off all the debt, debt would be about 480,000, let's call it, or something like that. So you've got 480 in debt that you could pay off. Currently, we're paying 58 plus 40 something. So right now, we're paying what, just over 100,000 in, in debt obligations every year, Mr. Kamali? Okay, so.
200.
200, I'm sorry, 268 for one payment and the other one is 58. So this is every six months. Yes.
68 plus 58 is not 200, that's like 120 or something.
No, that's, that's for every six months.
Oh, every six months we pay 100. Oh, oh, got you. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
As the next payment is on June, the other one is gonna be in December again. So when you pay it June, then you have another one.
Okay, great. So this is even better. So, so if we were to pay off the 480-something that becomes due after July 1, we would open up in our budget over 200 grand to replace with a new financing cost. And what DHCD just told us is that the financing cost for 4 million would be 200 or thereabouts. So I think that's really good news because we could just go from one financing cost to another one at a much lower rate, 2.99 or whatever it was they said. Yep. So from my perspective, it makes sense to pay off the remaining debt after July 1 out of our reserves, which are over 2 million. I don't know what they are right now, we probably wanna know what that is before we make any decision there. But my idea is that that could be a possibility. Then borrow the 4 million, which would come onto the budget and replace the financing that we had done. So it would be no hit, we wouldn't, it would almost be like, it's not even costing us anything, at least on an annualized basis. Um, and then whatever the difference is between four million and whatever the cost, we would look to maybe pay that out of, um, uh, our reserves, um, or even from ARPA if there's any money left over at that time. But, um, you know, so you you could be looking at paying five hundred, six hundred out of reserves, um, and 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 financing the rest. And that's sort of where where my head stands, uh, right now.
So, Mr. Kamali, can you clarify something for me? Because in the document, I said it was gonna be pay off, uh, one of them like on F, on twenty twenty three?
Yes.
Or is that like, oh, so which is the ones that the the Luke is talking about that are gonna be paid off right now in twenty two?
Well, I'm not saying they're gonna, none are gonna be paid off, but there are debt payments that are coming in June. So those debt payments are gonna come off of the amount owed. So the amount that we will have to pay off won't be six hundred and forty nine thousand. It's gonna be like, it's gonna be like four, four eighty is gonna be what we're gonna actually.
Yeah, because I wanna make sure, because originally what I understood from you, Luke, is that they were gonna be paid off on twenty July first, they'll be paid off, so therefore we'll take on the same, the same debt. And I believe that's not the case. But, Mr. Kamali, go ahead, apology, go ahead.
No, 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 I just, you know, uh, as Luke mentioned, the twenty four, the payment that we we could pay, which is June, we pay only one payment. And then we have the rest of the balance, which is four hundred eighty thousand dollars to five hundred.
Yep.
And then that's a decision that for July first, to pay them off and then start a new loan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kamali. Luke, anything else to add? If not, I'll pass the mic over to, uh, to Jimmy.
No, I'm good. I'd just love to hear everybody's thoughts on that. Thanks.
Okay, Jimmy?
Uh, I don't have anything to add. I think we need a full discussion about the Pots Hall and what we're gonna be doing and, you know, you know, but, you know, it's it's not a five minute discussion. But I have anything right now.
Thank you, Jimmy. Uh, Jared?
Yeah, um, I agree with Jimmy. I'm, this is, uh, generally new, I mean, newer for, newer information to me, and I'm still trying to process and, um, working through the numbers. So I think I'd probably appreciate a fuller, fuller discussion on this as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared. Thank you both, all three of you. Um, so I'll tell you where I'm at right now. A hundred percent agree it's a longer discussion than something being decided, we're about to vote for March first. I don't think that's where we're at right now. Uh, number two, uh, to me, is very important that we also create a plan that addresses, um, where are we gonna look for this money? Because I don't think the city should be financing this whole entire building. It is a community building. Um, I think we need to be looking at earmarks, we need to be looking at the governor's budget, and whatever the budget is able to give us some of this money. And for that, I will say like, we definitely need help. The same way we were, we managed to get a grant writer to write some of the grants for our memorial park, we need a team that's able to go out there and, um, and start looking for this money and following up with it. Um, because the conversations, um, for money for FY, uh, not twenty three, even FY twenty four, need to be happening right now if we wanna even get to anywhere close to like over a million dollar and ask for it to be financed at that end. So pardon me for a discussion also includes, um, a team that works on facilitating and obtaining this extra funds from either Mayor earmark or the governor's budget or any other budget that we could get money from. And not just necessarily the city putting the whole entire four or five million, uh, dollars. That's why I do agree that it's a bigger discussion, and I asked Mr. Kamali to bring everything up, um, on the table. Uh, Mr. Kamali, I know you have mentioned there is, um, a way to even, um, a- address some of the things that Pots Hall needs work on, on the top floor. But overall, like, I'm not, I'm not there where we could be like, the city's financing everything. We need to go for, we need to go after money. I'm talking about serious money. We haven't had an ask in the millions at all from the city. I don't know how long of a time. So maybe it's time we need to start asking for for some money to be able to also be brought into it when it comes to representatives at the various levels. Uh, Mr. Kamali, um, can you go ahead and work on the, on that plan for the various options? Even when it comes to like outreach to try to get to those grants? And even if it includes, um, hiring somebody to be able to help us do that?
Well, definitely, I need to get some help because that's something that we're looking for getting more grants, more money. And we're talking about four million dollars. So definitely, I have to look at, um, some options and I will definitely share it with Mayor and Council.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Um, Council, any other questions? And, um, our consultant did put, according to FY twenty, added that twenty twenty eight debt was for the Bass property and the twenty twenty debt was for refunding old debt. And the remainder, uh, six, uh, six, seven, nine, uh, for the funeral home. So that's also in the chat, uh, Councils. Okay. So, Council, if this is just an initial talk, we could definitely put this on the next work session to give Mr. Kamali some time to be able to, um, pre- present his, um, his, his findings on what are the resources we need to go out there, um, to try to get us some funding as well. Are we good?
Yeah.
Perfect. Jared?
Yes.
Jim, uh, Luke?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you guys so much and, um, for, uh, all the breakdown and, Mr. Kamali, for bringing us the information forward. Okay, item number, uh, ten, discussion update next session for Police Advisory Board and review of, um, the ordinance. Melissa, I think you might not have the latest one. Um, so the city, uh, put in ad out, uh, requesting for residents to, um, apply to join our Police Advisory Board. Uh, we have some candidates that have come forward. Uh, we still don't have no candidates coming from the apartments. So the city will intensify, uh, the recruitment to try to get, uh, somebody from the apartments to be able to, um, to join, um, the committee. So if you know anybody or you are somebody that lives in the apartments that would like to join the Police Advisory Review Board, um, please apply. Uh, we are gonna put information out this week uh, for the extension of the applications for, um, that particular, uh, position. But we definitely, uh, we had nobody to apply for from the apartments and they are a key part of, um, they hold one spot in the advisory board. All right, Jimmy, do you wanna add anything else, uh, before I open the floor for something else?
No, I mean, I was update, there has been some give and take of our attorney about uh, changes in the, um, you know, in the law and wondering whether we should, um, inform the, uh, candidates that we're gonna have to delay the actual creation of the board until the, uh, the next legislative session, we see what the legal status is of the board as opposed to actually putting it forward.
Thank you, Jimmy. Yeah, I I think that we need to, when the recent, when the ordinance was originally, uh, created, that was, uh, well, approved, I would like to say, that was back in, um, April, May, twenty twenty one, uh, before law change, before the county, um, staff their bore, um. And right now, um, there's a list, um, two or three bills are discussing, um, the advisory board and and the role in the county. So, um, we're gonna have to hold on to also update our resolution to reflect, uh, the current law. And at the same time, in the meantime, also like work on trying to recruit, uh, the last position. But we will send an email out to all the candidates to let them know we're gonna be on, um, on hold and we'll get back to them, uh, as soon as we're able to open up this space. Correct?
Fine.
Perfect. Uh, Jared?
I'm easy when it's ten thirty.
Yeah, no, 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 no additional comments.
Luke?
Jimmy, what's your bank account number? I'm kidding. Um, all right, and no comments for me. Thank you all. I know, I just wanna thank Jimmy and Selena for working a lot on this. I know you all have done the work and I've done no work on this, so thank you.
I've been, I've been putting out the time, but Jimmy, thank you for also attending that meeting, uh, when, when the county was presenting. I think we also were able to gather, um, gather a lot of useful information, um, for in that meeting. All right, moving on to item number eleven.
That was the way we tabled that.
Uh, item number eleven has been tabled. Moving on to item at number twelve, Orange, uh, oh, one, twenty twenty two budget amendment number three. Uh, there are gonna be items that are gonna, uh, if you guys, can you put it on the screen, Melissa, please? If you guys recall correctly, the budget was showed to us and it's up for vote on May, uh, March fir-, man, I'm confusing my ones. On March first for legislative meeting, um, for the budget amendment, Melissa. Oh, I apologize. There's a big delay on my, on my screen. So if you guys remember correctly, this was for, um, ta, 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 find the transfer in funds of appropriations should be made to fiscal year twenty two. This was like, uh, line item five, number five thousand regular pay, um, move five thousand dollars for the election cause, uh, to line item fifty one oh nine, which is the election align item. Okay, can you move it up? Um, and this is from, uh, regular pay from positions that we have open. Uh, nobody is getting, um, you know, there's, there's nothing else to it. Uh, the other one is line item forty five oh six, speed camera violations amount, um, wow, a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty two and fifty cents, um, to line item five thousand regular pay. And that was for the hazardous pay and bonus. And move, and moving, uh, from line item fifty five oh nine, the message production, amount of a thousand five hundred to line item five 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 one, egg hunt event for, um, an amount of a thousand five hundred, total amount, a hundred and twenty six thousand, eight hundred and fifty two with fifty cents. Okay, so this, uh, budget amendment is going up for vote on March, March first. Okay, any feedback questions?
Yeah, it's ten thirty, but I still have a question. Uh, it's in, in the past, speed camera violation has been restricted money. Can it be used for regular pay?
It's, um, for the hazardous pay, Jimmy, so it falls under safety. So still restricted to just that.
Not just for public safety. Okay, whatever. All right.
Yeah, public safety could mean sidewalks, it could mean, um, yeah, that's how we've been able to fund some of our sidewalks because it's considered public safety. Correct? Mr. Kamali, any feedback? Am I missing something?
Yeah, I just wanna bring to your attention, Mayor, uh, we were trying, I'm working with Tom Thomas, Mr. Tom can weigh in. And we're in communication with the Treasury Department. There might be a chance that we could use the hazard pay out of the ARPA money. And Tom has emailed them since last week. We haven't got any feedback from them. So even this afternoon, I talked to him. So somehow, we're still working on that item, so we didn't wanna remove it, we just wanna share it with you. In case if we cannot use the ARPA money, we may have to use the speed camera, which at this point, we have, uh, you know, projected five hundred thousand dollars in the speed camera. And right now, we are at the five hundred thousand. So for the first six months, the speed camera has been doing a good job. And hopefully, we will go over it after the fiscal year. So right now, we're not hundred percent sure that we're gonna draw that money from the speed camera.
Perfect. So we'll leave it there and we have something changed by, uh, March first, we go with the lead. I mean, goes the lead not to utilize the money from there, it's usually like the adding beyond like, you know, seven to fourteen days, that's like a little bit more pragmatic. All right, perfect. Jared?
Oops, no, um, yeah, no, no questions.
Luke?
Yeah, um, I just, m- m- my opinion, I I would, if we could fund this out of a budget amendment, that would be my preference. Um, instead of using ARPA funding, just because I think that, you know, everyone sort of made it clear at our, at our last meeting on ARPA funding that we'd like to do some, um, some more when it comes to relief efforts. And I know Mayor has proposed a couple of items that we all support on food security, um, and scholarships and the, and the like. And I, I think I would, you know, we could potentially even do more on scholarships, um, um, for folks. So I think that, the, I I like the idea of funding this out of a budget amendment, um, and keeping ARPA money. Because there's still a lot of stuff we put in there. We've talked about potentially more business aid. Um, and, you know, there are still some, you know, the Newton Street projects are still sitting there. Although I, I totally agree with everyone that a pause on, on the infrastructure piece is good for now while we focus on aid. But in, in general, there's still, I know we have a lot of money in ARPA left, over two million, but I just wanna be careful um, so that we, we make sure we have that money for, for everything that we wanna do there. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Also, keep in mind, uh, speed camera is how we've been able to, um, finance additional, uh, streets from the two design project. So one doesn't over rise, uh, the other. So if we don't utilize this money, that it definitely could go to, uh, streets and sidewalks.
Exactly.
So just be, be, um, be aware, that was like, it's a good position to have it because we definitely could utilize that in some of our streets and sidewalks, um. Even as much as we have done in the last, uh, four years, still these, they still need, some of them need a lot of work. All right, perfect. See that there's nothing else on this, in this item? Can we move to the next agenda item? Okay, uh, we already, uh, proved it, so moving on to number fourteen, adjournment? You guys are ridiculously quiet.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, it's been properly moved in second. Any objections? What, Jared, you're objecting?
Absolutely not.
All right, so, um, thank you, guys. Uh, this meeting has been adjourned. Um, not too bad, two, about two hours, seven, eight, nine, ten. This has been the longest meeting we've had. We had a great presentation. Thank you for sticking on. Um, staff, Mr. Kamali, thank you so much as well and have a good night. Okay?
Thanks, everyone.
And I'll see you tomorrow night.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. See you guys tomorrow night for the comprehensive first co- uh, conversation, um, that we will have, uh, email like, uh.
Who's leading that discussion, the chief? How is that gonna be done, by the way?
So I will be leading the discussion, uh, with, uh, Jared, and we will, we do have Chief, Mr. Kamali, who are also gonna be there. Our team who's gonna be taking notes and we wanna hear from the community, provide some information and that's kind of where we're at. Uh, but yeah, it's gonna be a lot of, a lot of listening. Um, yeah, so I'll, I'll be leading, uh, I'll be leading the meeting.
Thanks, everyone.
Jimmy, are you there? Are you gonna be there?
I'll be in the seat.
I will, I will not be there. Um, I'm on vacation and this has actually been my second meeting at night while on vacation. So I am, um, looking forward to what everybody says and hearing all that. Um, and apologize that I can't make it, but, um, I can't take three nights out of my vacation, so.
We're throwing a surprise meeting to vote a bunch of stuff tomorrow? Luke is not gonna be here.
Good luck. Thank you for voting.
Enjoy your time.
And we're, we're here to support each other. I definitely want to also thank you guys when, uh, the few days that I was out of town, uh, you guys stepped up to make sure, uh, you guys cover anything I couldn't cover from abroad. I did my best not to be selling emails in the middle of the night too much, and that's work in progress. But we're here for each other and, um, enjoy your time, okay? All right, guys, have a good night and team, I'll see you guys tomorrow last thing. Uh, we are gonna be giving, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, home test kits and facial masks on Thursday and on Friday. Uh, so if you have anybody that needs some, stop by, uh, the food distribution on Thursday and a city hall, uh, from, um, from what time is it, Melissa? Is it three?
Three to five.
Three to five, but it's first comes first serve and, um, if they go in within the first hour, they go within the first hour. Okay? All right, thank you, guys. Have a good night and we'll see you soon. And those are no calls to us. We managed to get them through the, through the county. All right, thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you, Melissa and Jared.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
To y'all. Thank you, staff.
Have a good night. Bye bye.
Good luck.